All right. Good evening, everyone. What's up? At this time, we would like to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and maybe Councilmember Westpeak can lead us in that. Thank you, Wesley. Your mother would be proud. All right, as you know, thanks to Tony, we have very regimented council meetings around here. So at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to the city clerk prior to the item being heard by the City Council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city and city of residence for the record. First up is some proclamations, and our first proclamation is to Stephen Houck and Jen Miller, and I know they're here. Can you guys come up? Thank you. So let me give you guys some education on who the Houcks are. Lester Houck was a photographer in Corona in the 19— he started in the 1930s, and he was here until the 1950s. And he was probably Corona's most famous photographer that we've ever had. And Sylvia's going to put up on the screen, these are some of the pictures that Lester took over the years. That's Corona lumber, that's the theater, that's the train station, Sixth Street, of course, smudge pots in a lemon grove, the exchange, lemon exchange, and Hispanic Heritage Month, I guess he did that, too. But Lester Houck probably has preserved more of our Corona's history than any other individual in Corona's history. He's taken brilliant pictures, he was a brilliant photographer, and we're honored to have his son, Stephen Houck, here today, and his granddaughter, Jen Miller. And what they've done—hang on one second— Stephen and Jen have donated a bunch of pictures of Corona from back in the day, and they're priceless pictures. And just so you know, they're going to be donated to our Heritage Room. They're donating them to our Heritage Room. They may or may not be stuck in the mayor's office for a year first, but these are priceless, and I just want to say thank you to both for coming and donating these.
We have another batch of photos for you to scan, but we'd like to have those back.
We figured you can take them, and we can get them to you, and have a copy of them.
Yeah, so what they said is they have come with more pictures that they want us to scan, and we will, and then we'll give them back the originals.
I have extra, 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 extra extras. If anyone wants a postcard, I brought extras.
And they have a lot of postcards. So with that, we do have recognitions for you guys. This one's for Stephen. And by the way, these were my first signatures as mayor. And this one's for Jennifer. And thank you, thank you, guys, for donating all this to our history. It truly means a lot.
(inaudible)
And there's more coming, so.
They lived here for 25, 70 years. He started with—
Go ahead.
He started as a chemist with Sunkist, and a few years later, they purchased the studio as 205 E Sixth Street. And they loved the city, they were both involved in Lions Club and Seroptimus, and they had a good time here, and they represented the city well and enjoyed the time they were here.
Thank you. Can we get a round of applause? Can we get you guys a picture?
Turning around? Turning.
Turn. Or turn. I'll send someone over, Sylvia Long. I got two microphones. Our next recognition is for Santiago cross-country CIF champions, if they can come forward. Stand up here. Okay, so let me give you some background on Santiago cross-country. First of all, these girls believe in alarm clocks, because they woke me up out of bed at a very early Sunday morning to go watch them run, and I will find a way to get all of you back for that until we are even. And then I went to this—what was that called?
Shark Attack 5K.
The Shark Attack 5K, there was actually no attacks. And Coach, you—I've never seen anybody with so much personality with a microphone. So with that, I'm going to—it's better that I turn this over to you, and you can introduce everyone and tell them their accomplishments and go from there.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Council and everyone, for having us and recognizing this amazing accomplishment that Santiago High School did, representing the city of Corona. Totally—it's a total honor that we had this great opportunity. Not only were we the Big Eight League champions, we were the CIF Division One champions and went on to be the California State Champions this year. It was an amazing accomplishment. These are the young ladies, I'm going to introduce them to you. So this is sophomore Braylon Combe, and she was our number-two runner this season, running 16:32 for three miles and running a new school record for three miles for the sophomore-age group. This is Jayla Jaffe, she's also a sophomore. She was mainly right around our number-seven runner all season long, but she helped push the girls every step of the way. We're not just a team of number-one or top runners, but each one of these girls bring value, and Jayla definitely did. Audrey Buckley, she was—she's a sophomore. Her best time this season was—excuse me, she's a junior, excuse me. I don't generally make those types of mistakes. But Audrey Buckley, she's a junior, she was right around our number-five runner all season long, and the number-five runner is the one who generally stops your score from adding up. So the number-five runner is very, very valuable in getting across that finish line to stop our score from continuing to add up. And so that's what Audrey was known for. Taylor Davis, she's one of our top sophomores, she was one of the top sophomores in the state of California. I mentioned Braylon, Braylon finished fifth place in the state of California, and Taylor Davis finished 10th place in the state of California. We were the only team to actually have three individuals in the top 10 make All-State, and two of them were sophomores. And so Taylor Davis ran a blistering time of 16:44 this year, 17:10 for 5K, so that's Taylor Davis. This is Madeline Sayana, and she's our lone senior girl on the team. Maddie had an amazing season for the program this year, and at the state meet, she had a severely sprained ankle during the race. And while running as our number-four runner, we were down by 10 points going into the last mile of the race, and Maddie, on the hurt foot, managed to catch eight girls in the last mile. So she really helped flip our score from being down 10 points to—we actually won the state title by one point. So it is a team effort, and each one of them performed well at the state meet, but that was one of the performances that really stood out because she sprained her ankle during the race. So that's senior Madeline Sayana, and her fastest time this year was a senior record, 17:14 for three miles. Next up, we have Kinsley Witkovich, she's also a sophomore, she's a part of this amazing sophomore class that we have. She was right around our number-six runner most of the season long, her fastest time was right around 18:02 for three miles. And again, Kinsley is just a superstar in the making, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for her and her sophomore sisters. They truly have become like sisters, it's amazing. And of course, Riley Blade. There's so much that I could say about Riley, I'd take up the next hour talking about all of her accomplishments. But Riley ran some of the fastest times in California state history for three miles at 15:32. She ran a 5K at Woodward Park, the historical Woodward Park, where all the state teams go and compete every year, and ran a blistering time of 16:45, which is the fifth-fastest 5K time ever run on the Woodward Park course. And then she also on the historical Mount SAC course—if any of you have ever heard of Mount SAC, that is one of the major courses, one of the major races with big hills in it. She also ran a 16:49 on that course, which is one of the fastest times ever run, while becoming the CIF individual champion, helping lead our team, and being the state individual champion while helping lead our team. This is Riley Blade, she's a junior, she'll be coming back next year. So like I said, all these girls will be coming back except Maddie, and we're looking forward to representing Corona at the highest level again next year. One of the things we wanted to donate to the Council is, our team, for winning the state title, we got invited to go to NXN Nike Nationals in Portland, Oregon. And it's not a school-functioned event because it's after the season's over. So Nike provided plane tickets and airfare and hotel reservations for all seven of the girls and myself, and they gave us some uniforms to represent the city that we ran for. So this says Corona on the front of it. And so we represented Corona on the national stage in Portland, Oregon, and they gave us these uniforms to wear, and I had all seven girls and myself sign it. So perhaps maybe you could put it in a frame of some sort and hang it somewhere special, but this is it, the Corona— So to you, Mr. Mayor, and yeah, that's pretty much the story from this season. It was truly historical and monumental on the highest level of the things that these girls accomplished, and we're just looking forward to more next season.
Thank you, Coach. This will also be hanging in the mayor's office for the next year. Just raise a hand, how many parents are here of these girls and friends? You have such awesome daughters, and you guys are great parents. Can you hand out these proclamations? Braylon?
Braylon.
There you go. Merry Christmas. Jayla? Did I say that right? Thank you. Coach Gillett?
No, she's not here, but I can give it to her.
Okay.
She's one of our assistant coaches.
Because I was a little confused there.
No worries, no worries.
Coach Etheridge?
Coach Etheridge, yes.
Jackie Hill isn't here.
She's one of my assistants as well.
You want to be Jackie? We have a Jackie. Coach Zubak?
He's not here either, but he's also one of our assistants. We have three great assistant coaches.
Putting all these guys in timeout. Riley, the state champion.
And he's one of our school administrators, one of the principals at our school.
Oh, okay. Well, we didn't make a proclamation for you, but we have a bunch of spares if you need one. I'm not going to wear this, so can we take a picture, all of us, and we'll clap you off?
Coach, you got a big target on your back for next year.
Yes, we can find it.
Yeah?
We're going to build, we're going to do our hard work.
You got a solid team, Coach, good job.
But in Corona, we're not going to back down, right? Love it.
All right. Try not to screw this up. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public meeting minutes?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Hang on a second, I got to get my place. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Please, we second it.
Oh.
I'll second. Someone press the button, I don't know who.
So you push buttons, okay.
Do you like Tony Wentz?
How would you like us to do it, sir?
I'm more of a laid-back mayor, so—
We'll continue to press the buttons.
Push them, if you will, speak it out, if you want. Steiner seconded. Can we do the vote? Oh, this is going to be a year.
Gets better, Tom.
At the end.
All right. All items listed on—we're going to do consent calendar now. Oh, Jen, did you have some?
I was going to leave them.
Okay, they're in very good hands, I think. All right, here we go. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters. Status reports are documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would my esteemed colleagues like to poll any items for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, item number 10, just because I'd like to hear what great things we're doing.
Yeah, 10 and 17.
I got 10 as well.
10, okay. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we did receive two speaker cards for the consent calendar, and they are one for Agenda Item 13 and one for Agenda Item 17.
With that out of the way, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Anybody want to quietly second? No? All right. Can we—yeah, we did. And it's approved. Congratulations. So our first number up is 10. Wesley, do you want a staff report, or—
I think I'd just like to hear a report.
Jacobi?
So Karen Roper, our Homeless Solutions Manager is here, and she's got a couple of slides that she'll share and provide an update on some of our latest actions. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, congratulations—
Thank you.
—on being our mayor. And honorable council members, I'm super excited to be here. I just happen to have a slide presentation ready for you. So thank you so much. I thought it might be good for you to hear a little bit about the components of the agenda item before you, but then also, it's been a while since you've had an update on our homeless system of services. And then we have some exciting news about some grants that are in the pipeline. Does that sound good to you all?
Great.
And what do I usually ask you to do on presentations?
Buckle up.
Okay, hang on and buckle up. Here we go. Okay, so the agenda item before you is requesting for you to authorize your city attorney and your city manager to prepare and approve a Second Amendment to our MOU with the city of Norco, as well as a Second Amendment to CityNet. When you think about the joint partnership that we have between the city of Norco and the city of Corona, all of the funding sources are interconnected because we have one contract with CityNet that has two scopes of services for both cities. So—and this is also a multi-year agreement, which is why the funds seem a little bit higher. It's not just one fiscal year, it's multiple fiscal years. So it will effectively—if you approve this cover from July 1st of '22 through September 30th, I believe, of 2025, and that's because there are multiple grant funding sources. The other thing is that the city of Norco was fortunate in getting a congressional allocation of funds from Congressman Calvert for SAMSA funds. And I have been working with them. I thought congressional awards were really super easy, but with SAMSA money, it's federal funds, and it comes with a lot of requirements in terms of the program and scope of services and all of the documentation that the feds want before the grant is approved, but the budget line items have not been approved. We are waiting to hear from them. We've been in regular communication with the staff up in Maryland. And so because of this, we're requesting that your council authorize your city attorney and city manager to have the authority to prepare and approve the Second Amendments. They are very similar to what you've already approved in terms of the components and terms and conditions, except for that we have more funding and more resources. The other thing I wanted to draw to your attention is that you can see on the slide, between the multiple years of funding, the city of Corona is earning $222,000-plus in administrative costs, which offsets the investment that you make in your homeless solutions staff. So it's a lot of work with our partnership between the two cities, but there's a benefit to the city of Norco and a cool benefit to the city of Corona. And you can see the multiple funding sources, you're investing your general funds through your measure, and then Norco is investing housing funds, and then, of course, there's the county's encampment response funds, which you, by the way, approved that agreement with the county back in June. And most of the funding is going to the CityNet, but I want to make sure—to draw attention to—that we allocated $150,000 for encampment cleanup, so that supports your community services department, that Moses and team that does the Santa Ana Riverbed encampment cleanups. And I know he has some cool updates, I believe they just completed the cleanup of the Santa Ana River in the Prado Basin area. So let's talk about the components of the agenda item. The additional funds are going to expand motels in both the city of Corona and the city of Norco. So because of the Santa Ana Riverbed funds, we have 10 more motels for Corona and for Norco. Also, each city will be getting two additional CityNet case managers, and they will be focused on housing, because we are really ramping up the allocation of housing resources. Up to a year worth of rental subsidy, landlord incentives, security deposits, we want to kick those doors open to housing for those that have high barriers. And the folks living in the riverbed are folks that have some of the highest barriers that have been living there for a long time, living with mental illness and drug addiction and chronic health. And so what we want to be able to do is open those doors to housing. One of the things that I had contacted the county about, I said, hey, since this money is actually state funds, what do you think about asking the state if they'd be willing to allow us to prepay housing for up to a year for these clients that have high barriers as an incentive? County said, let's see what they say. So we asked the state, the state said yes. So we will develop lease provisions that will make sure that if there's a premature termination in the lease, that we are either—CityNet has either refunded, or we can place another client in that same unit. All of these things are connected to our whatever it takes to end homelessness and housing. So we are super excited for all of the additional resources that these grant funds bring, and it's a testimony to your leadership and your investment when you make investment out of city funds, state funds, county funds, federal funds follow. Since we're talking about the CityNet contract, I wanted to highlight—this just was happening yesterday and today. Some of you may have seen the posts on Facebook already, one of our community partners who referred this family to us was Angels Over Cliffs. And actually, I spoke at their event for Thanksgiving. Councilmember Steiner, you were there with me. Remember, we talked to this family. And this family gave us the permission to highlight their story. They were struggling with addiction, evictions, credit issues. They—it was this couple with their children and grandma, all living in their car in the heat of August. And when we got the referral from Angels Over Cliffs, we immediately placed them in our motel program, and they have been in the motel program all of this time since. And then we invested housing resources out of our contract to pay for first and last month's rent and security deposit. And then, of course, our wonderful Karen Alexander, through Make It Cozy, was working with the family in CityNet for additional household items. This is just one of many success stories that we could tell you about for the funds that are invested to transform lives. I wanted to give you just a quick update on the system of services. So you may recall, we had the grand opening ceremony in May, and then we opened the shelter in June, and we have been pretty much at capacity almost every day. It's either that, or it's—we only—we don't have a female bed, or we don't have a male bed. And so because of that, CityNet has been activated almost every day. Why? Because they are a resource to the police department for anti-camping enforcement. So if our Harrison Hope Center is full, we will open up an additional above-capacity motel room to make sure that we are providing shelter and resources. So far, we've been able to manage within the budget, and we haven't come back to you and asked for more money, but you need to know that we always go over capacity when we do that to support anti-camping enforcement, but we've been able to manage it in the budget so far. Two of my heroes that are in this room that have been amazing partners, because of all the calls for service that they have, our Chief Newman and Chief Young. The fire department and the police department have been critical working with us in the implementation of these resources that have come online, and I just want to thank and acknowledge them, as well as the other team members that are working with us. But for the first responders that are majorly impacted, for folks that are living on the streets, I just want to personally acknowledge their leadership. Thank you to both of you. Also, tenant-based rental assistance. Your council made a decision to take the home money that we receive, you know, that's out of the community services department, and you allocated it to support the homeless plan. We allocated that to Mercy House to do tenant-based rental assistance. Here's something really super cool that we did. There are these fair-market standard requirements from HUD, and instead of tying our standards to the regional housing authority standards, which have much lower rent allowances, Mercy House did a local market assessment, because Corona has some of the highest rents in the region, you know this. We did that, it's okay with HUD. Now we can allow our residents who love this city, who became homeless in the city, who were helped through shelter, to stay in housing in the city. So we've launched that program, we're helping people that are at risk of losing their housing, as well as those that are graduating from Hope Center and the motel program into permanent housing. So more exciting permanent housing— So more exciting permanent housing stories for you. Permanent supportive housing, the Fifth Street units, those have been renovated. Thank you to the support from Moses and Kevin and the work that CityNet did, I mean Mercy House. The units have been furnished, and we are waiting to complete placements for those units, and I'll tell you about that when I tell you about a grant that's pending. The partnership with Central Medico Community Clinic has been going great. They are regularly meeting with the clients at the Hope Center, and we're trying to work out the details regarding care. One of the things that we've, I don't want to call it a complication, but when clients have their own insurance or health plan, there are details we have to work out before they can receive treatment. So we're trying to work out those details before we finalize the MOU with Corona Regional Medical Center for Post-Hospital Recuperative Care. The pilot meal transportation program, we are set to launch that by the end of this month. That's the target goal. And what we've been doing is working with Second Mile Homeless Ministry to get all of those clients that have been receiving services in the park to be enrolled, because we have to do screenings and compliance with our contract for open felony warrants and such. And so CityNet has been diligently working on that. Melanie's volunteers have been screened. We have a meeting on Friday to talk about them coming to the Hope Center, working with Mercy House to begin volunteering, and then starting the meal program. So we hope to launch that by the end of this month. I'm super excited about that. That will be seven days a week, a warm meal, and a bag of food to carry away. And our dream is that when folks come there, they're going to want to stay at the Hope Center, get medical treatment, end their homelessness. Vista Dorada, super excited about that. You know we have been able to house 52 of Corona's chronically homeless residents, long-term residents that are thriving and doing well there. And of course, you know we have the grand opening ceremony on December 20th, that we will be celebrating with Supervisor Spiegel and your city council, and also Abode Communities and other partners. So we're super excited about that. And they had a list of needs that the residents have, and so K2, who is here, is busy working with Mercy House and bringing resources together to provide some more needs for those folks that are living there. So super excited about that. The county mobile crisis management team from Behavioral Health has been working well with us. We have regular meetings between them, CityNet, Mercy House, our police department, Hope Team, City Homeless Solutions, our park rangers. Integration, integration. What do we talk about? The hardest-to-serve, highest-barrier clients and how we work together to get them served and connected. That's the formula and the key to success. And that's how we've continued to move people off the streets and into services. Grants in the pipeline, super excited about the partnership that we have with the county. I can't thank Supervisor Spiegel and the county staff at the Housing and Workforce Services Department enough. I'm just going to give you an example. I had heard that the county was going to be building capacity for home, building new shelter units within each of the supervisory districts, and that they would allocate ARPA money for bricks-and-sticks costs. So one of the things that I mentioned to the county is, well, the City of Corona already invested $3 million. We've already built the shelter. Would you be willing to reimburse us for those costs and in turn allow us to use those for services? And so I'm excited to tell you that next Tuesday, on agenda at the Board of Supervisors will be this $1 million. And we are finalizing the scope of services to allow it to have language that is whatever it takes, whether it's housing assistance, paying an old utility bill that might be the barrier to keep someone from housing, to shelter, to our meal program, to anything, whatever it takes for our system of services. The county was very supportive. $400,000 HIP grant. What's HIP? Housing Homeless Incentive Program. That's a regional initiative with the managed Medi-Cal providers. Through Molina, we are getting $400,000 to invest in our Hope Center for operations as well as after-hours post-hospital recuperative care. Project-based vouchers. This was a partnership between Homeless Solutions and Mercy House. We wrote a grant application for project-based vouchers. That's what Vista Dorada has, and now we were awarded 20 years' worth of subsidy for the Fifth Street units. So we are working on finalizing the scope of services and the terms and conditions. Once that happens, then we go through the same process that we went through for Vista Dorada, because Vista Dorada has project-based vouchers. So that helps to cash flow the property and in turn helps the City of Corona. So as you can see, the county has been a huge partner with us. They have used your leadership and this city as an example of how cities can move the needle and end homelessness. It starts with elected officials who are champions, who make an investment out of city funds. And when they do that, all of the other partnerships and funding follow. You guys are the model. You're being talked about all over the place. And I just want to sincerely thank you and, of course, our amazing city manager, because if it were not for his leadership and all of the support that is provided from him and our city departments and our partners, it's incredible. I feel like I'm just living the dream. I appreciate the privilege to be a part of it. Thank you.
Karen, you're awesome. I think now we need to ask for public cards from the, any speaker cards from the public, right? Or do you guys want questions first? Well, if it's my way, I think we'll go with the speaker cards. Can we do that? Master Sergeant?
We have one speaker card for this item.
Okay.
This is Tom, Mayor, Magistrates, Chief. Well, you guys all know that I'm really experienced with Karen's organization, and man, I think that we ought to do a city resolution to change the Karen connotation of that name to Pam, you know what I mean? Because Karen's all right, you know? And some people just care a lot, man, like the church. Sometimes they care a lot, and they stumble the righteous with the commandments of men because they care too much. Me, I care too much that they're doing that, you know? And I sometimes get just as judgmental about people that are trying to tell people to follow a bunch of rules that aren't in the Bible. Anyway, like I said, I think you guys ought to help her out. She's doing a good job. But you're never going to keep up with the department and them making people homeless, because catching criminals is difficult. And it's much easier to create them out of whole cloth or whole families. And that's what they're doing, man. Yeah, I mean, I've been telling you this over and over again, but my daughter, you know, she took off this time last week, you know? About $25,000, $30,000 in her, you know, late-model BMW. And I figured, you know, she's an adult. But when she was gone for about a week and she did a little suicide-like message, I wanted to do a missing persons report. But nobody called me back. 36 hours later, I'm still calling. I'm like, why hasn't a cop called me? And then a girl gets on the phone, oh, you know what? I just talked to her. She's fine. I'm like, okay, well, that's good, you know? Anyway, I don't know if that timeline, it might have been the next day. But anyway, I went on the next one. Somebody said they're fine. I'm not hearing from her. She wasn't fine, you know what I mean? And nobody did this police report. Go on, man, five days. I'm trying to get the cops to do a police report, but they're not doing it. But what happened was, is then finally, Santa Monica, a friend of hers had her phone. It was tracking, and it was going all kinds of places. And one was in a, like a tennis place that was all boarded up, and it was kind of weird. So we sent, Santa Monica cops went right down there. They acted like I was a human being. And they didn't find her, but nobody called me when her car was, was repossessed, you know, towed a week earlier. I would have known where she was and go to look for her. Nobody told me when she, they found out, they found out that she'd been robbed and beaten and gang raped, okay? Nobody called me because nobody put a police report. And then when I tried to freaking, when I went and found her, you know, five days later, she thought it was a fucking year later, okay? And she's broken, man. But these guys wouldn't help me. They freaking, I tried to get them to help me put her in the hospital, but no, man, they don't do that. They would only manufacture criminal out of her. If we pay, if we press charges for the couple thousand dollars worth of damage she done around the house, that was cool. But other than that, they put me in jail, man, just like usual. And they didn't think my family was going to get me out, but they were wrong. And so, anyway, I'll be back if you finish this up. God bless you guys.
All right. Thank you. Don't forget your camera.
Thank you. That's always your job, Mayor.
Try hard. Any comments, questions?
Just a couple of comments. You know, Ms. Roper, we have all learned so much over the last couple of years, and the theme that I keep referring back to is that, you know, you have to kind of have a program in order to capitalize on all of the different funding that's available. And one of the things that I am so appreciative of is that you seem to never end in searching out other people's money, which is our favorite type of money. And I'm always amazed to hear how you are not only getting, you know, getting funds that are available, but you are kind of changing the game in how we can, how we can spend them. So the $1 million to, for sticks and bricks, as you put it, on something that we already built, and being able to take that money and get them to let us use it to continue the good that we're doing for, for the homeless in Corona. So I'm so appreciative of you. You continue to thank us for our leadership, but really, we need to thank you for your leadership and your unmatched hustle when it comes to, you know, finding different funding sources. So I'm really appreciative of it. Thank you so much.
Wesley?
Ditto. I'm impressed every single time you open your mouth. Every person I talk to at the county or other cities, I get asked, hey, where did you find Karen? And I'm like, I'm not telling you. No, I tell them it's Jim. But yeah, you are a beacon for, for folks in this arena, and thank you for all the help that you, I see you give and your time and your heart that you give, even when it doesn't work out for folks, that it doesn't deter you, and it's inspiring. So wherever, wherever your fill spot is, I want to find it one of these days and make sure it stays that way. So thank you for your service.
And council member speak. I forgot to thank you, that family, the success story. I know you and your wife donated a beautiful kitchen dining room set. They were so thankful, and that's one of many examples. Your council members take time and invest from your own resources to be a part of the solution. So thank you.
Ms. Roper, I just, I want to thank you for, for being creative in this process. You know, you've led us through building the strategic plan, but then like finding the funding, the funding sources, when they don't fit, you find a way to like ideally make them fit and go and ask, hey, if we can't, this isn't exactly what you asked for, but what do you propose? And so not sticking to the rules in a way, like being creative has gotten us, I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to regret that long. What I mean is, you've gotten really creative, and it's, and it's paid dividends. So thank you very much.
And if I just may comment on that, it is because the county has great faith and trust in you and has seen your actions and seen that you mean business about addressing homelessness. And so they are eager to support you all and partner with you, and they've said that to you. So they like the creative ideas and encourage it. They're very supportive that way. So it's a great relationship.
Thank you for the incredible update. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, sir.
I get to go last. This is so fun. I appreciate Councilmember Casillas's comments. The, I went and spoke at a church a few months back with Karen, a couple months back, and she didn't know that I was watching, but I was watching her. And this church had a basket that you put money in, and Karen carries this big purse, and I don't know what's in it, but she just grabbed this big chunk of money out of it, and she threw it in the basket quietly, no one noticed but me. And I, you were so responsible with your money, and I watched it, and you did it with love. But more importantly, or as important, you were spending our money, the city money, responsibly and with love. And I think that's the greatest compliment that all of us can give you. So well done. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
With that, do we have a motion? Do you want to push buttons?
I'll move to approve item 10.
Second.
Okay.
You're not pushing buttons, then?
Listen, he says he didn't care.
I pushed buttons and spoke. Broke the rules.
Sorry.
It's a new day. It's a new council.
Same council.
Same council. All right. It's going to be a long night. Number 13 was pulled. Master Sergeant?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker card for item 13.
Okay. All right, Don, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to put in a word for the crossing guards, least ones I see. They're terrific. I live near Mountain Gate Park, and so there's one lady that handles that intersection at the, intersection of Main and Mountain Gate, right there in front of the park. She's terrific. She's magnificent. She's the definition of conscientious. She's just wonderful. And sometimes I'm at the corner of Lincoln and, or Lincoln and Opera come together with Mountain Gate, they're there in my Eisenhower School, and there's a person that works that. They're just terrific as can be. And so that's all. I just want to put in a pat on the back for those people, because they are very conscientious. They do a great job. So when you're considering this thing of sharing some money with the school district for the crossing guards, I just want to give a pat on the back to those people. They're terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any council member comments? All right, with that, do we have a motion?
Someone pressed the button.
Did someone press the second button?
Uh huh.
Okay. Sylvia?
Okay, I have Tony DiDario as the first, and Wes Speak as the mover.
All right, that works. And it's five to zero. Okay, up next is number 17. Councilmember Casillas, I believe you.
Yes, I just, I wanted to make note of, of something on this staff report that I read, and I wanted to give a shout out. So the original bid was advertised to the public on July 3rd of 2023. The lowest bid result for base bid, Schedule A, was approximately $17 million. This bid price exceeded the city's project budget. Therefore, the city rejected the bid package. The special provisions within the bid were modified to provide more clarity to the project scope, and the bid package was re-advertised on September 9th, 2023. Even though it led to three- to four-month delay in the project schedule, it resulted in a savings of approximately $4 million, allowing additional streets and areas to be added to the project and still be within the project budget. So Mr. Mayor and Mr. Ellis, I just wanted to comment and give kudos to staff for thinking through this bid and slowing it down a little bit and rewriting it, putting it back out there. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Jackie. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, yes, I have two speaker cards for this item.
Oh. Can you hang on one second? Wes, um...
Did you pull it? Just me? Okay. Sorry.
Okay, I think we got that squared away. Can we do the speaker cards now?
And former Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is about my third time speaking to the council, and it's getting a little easier. I'm not, I don't feel as jumpy right now. So my name is Jim Verden. I live at 1067 Placid Drive. We are in the area that on the project map is designated as Alternative Area D. It's a tract of homes that was built in 1963. Streets put in at the, after the houses were built. So the streets are 60 years old and have never been repaved. I've got a picture of the current condition of the street in front of my home on the, on the screen for you to see. Pretty bad. And so we would just request that you please approve the award for the paving and include Area D in that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Ellis? Mr. Ellis, is there a way?
Can you confirm it?
Yeah.
Yes, that area is included in this, so it's going to be taken care of as part of this, this paving.
Just to make sure. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Just when you got good at speaking up here. Joe?
Well, so that's, so I kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I really, I really, I drive around a lot of streets in Corona. I don't know of any worse than Alamo Track. It's really bad over there. It's really exceptionally bad, and it really needs to get done. And, you know, I'm not an objective, you know, pavement testing company or anything like that, but it's really, really bad. It's about as bad as our tract was before, where it's busted all the way down to the dirt. So I appreciate that it's gonna get done. So thank you very much.
Cool. With that, and seeing no other speakers, bring it back for comments. Tony?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I want to really tip my hat and say thank you to Savat. A little more than a year ago, Savat and I met in the track when we spoke with a lot of the residents. It was Halloween. Savat was dressed like a Dracula, I believe. And so it wasn't weird at all. But, you know, there's a lot of things that we don't know until somebody points it out. So, you know, I want to, I want to say thank you to Mr. Verden for bringing this to our attention and Savat for doing the groundwork and looking at it and really going through the bids and figuring out where we could, where we could fit this in. Want to remind everybody the timeframe is January to August, right? So we'll, we'll get it in there when, when, when it's the best time to do it. But I just wanted to tip my hat to Savat because he really goes above and beyond. And we met at something like 6:30 in the morning or something. And, and, you know, he really goes out and is on site quite a bit and doing a great job. So thank you, Mr. Savat. I really appreciate it. That's it.
I, I just wanted to say thanks again for coming in and keeping, keeping coming. We tell people, it's interesting that when someone's mad, you know, mad at me, and they'll call me on the phone, and they'll say, you know, I'm gonna come down. And I said, I want you to. The five of us want to hear from you. We want, you know, we want your phone calls. We want your email. We don't want to, that you have to do that. You have to come down. But we want you to come down. We want to be able to know if you see something that's wrong. That's why I've really pushed, you know, the use of see, click, fix and, and getting additional eyes on things. And I just want to say thank you, sir, for, for your effort and, and for all your neighbors, too. Thank you.
Jackie?
I, I think I said what I wanted. But Mr. Kung Fu, thank you for saving us a ton of money. We appreciate it.
And Jim's cool. And Mr. Verden, you gotta come back when it's done. You gotta report on it. All right. With that, should we push some buttons and schedule a vote?
I think buttons have been pushed.
All right, Master Sergeant?
So I have Vice Mayor Steiner as the mover and Councilmember Speak, and Casillas has the second.
Well, there you go. All right, 5-0. We're moving right along here. Thank you. We're up to communications from the public. I'm gonna read a boring paragraph. It starts out with, "This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record." Ms. Edwards, what do you got?
Mayor, we have three speaker cards for communication from the public.
All right. Kick it off with Dale.
Well, I want to start this by saying that I realize the city council is not responsible for the hospital Corona Regional. I'll talk about Corona, excuse me, I'll talk about corporate embarrassment later. This is not about me or my wife.
Is that on?
But I've had four horrendous experiences at the hospital. I spoke to the last chief executive officer, and he said he was gonna make some changes. Took my wife a week to get transferred out of the hospital once to another hospital that had equipment that could take care of her. Michelle Wentworth helped me in that ordeal. Corona later apologized to me. I was optimistic for change. I haven't seen it. My wife was in the ER room for 35 minutes having a heart attack without taking her to the back room. Unacceptable. A week ago, she went to the hospital with a cut. They sent her home with that repair job. Went to a restaurant. They left the IV in her arm. Totally unacceptable. I've talked to four doctors that say this isn't acceptable. And I've talked to an executive board member of another hospital in Texas. He said, this doesn't happen. So I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm, I'm more livid about this than the zoning on the golf course. Corona has the lowest rating of any hospital within 25 miles of Sixth and Main Street. The data I provided on those charts shows the number of customers that have gone to a hospital and would recommend it. 53, just barely more than half of the people that go to Corona would recommend it. That's 17% below the national average of 70%. It's pathetic. Again, the lowest rated hospital in the area. Why is hospital performance important? If you take a five-star hotel, excuse me, hospital, you have a 50% lower risk of dying in a hospital than one that has one star. What have I done about it? I spoke with eight doctors regarding treatment expectations and the CEO, as I stated. Oh, let's go, we can go to the last one. I'm sorry. And I said it's totally unacceptable. I spoke to a doctor that's got an office. He's still a practicing doctor within a mile and a quarter of the hospital. He went to an attorney and had a document made up that if an ambulance picks him up, he does not want to go to Corona, and a document releases liability for the ambulance company to take him to another hospital farther away. That's from a doctor. I did talk to the chief of nursing, Phyllis Snyder. She has 600 nurses working for her. Great lady, very positive. She's got good plans. She's been there for three years. I feel confident. I'm gonna talk to Sam, hopefully in the next week, and make sure that she gets the support. The next step, if, if we can't start seeing improvement in Corona, I'm, I'm, I'm hell-bent for corporate embarrassment. I would like to see the Corona Hospital be the same level of excellence as our police department and our fire department, but it's not close. And I swear, I'm dedicated to this. And I realize that you guys can't do anything, but if you see me on Facebook, you'll understand why. And I hope after talking to Sam, I don't have to do that. So.
Thanks, Dale. Good to see you, Sandy.
It's ridiculous, man. I want to call a truce, okay? You know, we're going to court. We're gonna do this thing there, you know? Will you please call this guy off of me? Okay? Like I said, I come home with my daughter. We stop at Green River. She just, she was explaining to me what happened, and she realized, you know, she, about the rape and brutal beating that she'd taken. And how she was fragmented, you know, and telling herself to get out of her body so she didn't have to feel this, you know? And she kind of went crazy, and I took her to get some food. And I, she usually spends like $100 at, at a fast food, you know? But I'm like, no, no, I don't have 100 bucks, you know? And she's, thinks she's rich because she had like 30 grand, you know? Anyway, she, she starts going crazy and violent. My wife was there. She calls cops. We tried to, I want to get her in a hospital. I called the people. I said, please, can you help me get my daughter? You know, she is dangerous. She is a danger to herself and others. She needs to be in a hospital. They don't come. Seven hours, they wait. They're coordinating with my family, okay? There, there's a restraining order. Now, I got changed into a non-negative contact. I had the papers. I was gonna show it to you, you know, in January, February, March, like June, okay? So I could protect my family against the child molesters and the gang members they had in my, in my house that they wouldn't protect him from. He wouldn't do anything. The guy has to turn himself in, the child molester, go to jail. Okay? That's, that's one. Okay? I know I've, I'm up here telling truth every week, and nobody cares about these truths. Okay? I'm the guy that cries truth. Okay? But people care about child molesters not being taken care of. And then my daughter, man, out on the streets that could have been rescued but wasn't because they're playing games. The game that I don't deserve equal protection under the law. And because I'm coming after you, anything you can do to hurt me is all fair game and love and war, you know what I mean? But now, you didn't just hurt me. You didn't just eat me. I've been at that Corona hospital. They'd sent me away with a Vicodin, man. I've never had such pain in my life. I've raced motorcycles and trucks and fricking fought for championships against the best in the world of all those sports. But now I've never had pain like that dog, man. And the Corona just sewed me up and throw me out with a Vicodin. I couldn't even talk. Anyway, I go home. I fricking, I'm waiting for these guys to help me. They come back seven hours later when they know my family's coming, okay? They won't go in the house to help, okay? They bring me out pretending they're gonna help me, you know, they want to, they want to frisk me, this and that. They put me in the car. So now my daughter can't help nobody. I can't get no help. Okay? And then when, then they forced, then my, the family comes, so some other people that do have restraining order, you know, they kind of force it in there. Okay? So now they do have me. And now I can't help my daughter. I can't get her to a hospital. And they will not take her unless we'll make her a felon. Okay? Because last time, they just take her to jail to play with her naked. And then they dump her out in fricking San Bernardino. She'd never done meth or fentanyl. A, a year ago, when they had me in jail and I was supposed to be helping her, but they, I had to get out just so I could help her. You gotta stop this. Okay? Here's, I'm going up 700,000, you know, 700.
Don't forget your camera. It's my job. Joe?
Hello. So I do consider Chris and his family to be my friends. I also have a lot of friends on, on the PD. And I had another friend that had a similar missing family member recently. And it's a bad, it's a bad situation when an adult goes missing. And I, and, and I want to, I want to give a shout out to the PD. It's complicated. You can't just go chasing after every adult that, that's missing under whatever circumstances. So there's, there's two sides to it. I, I, I know him. I know his wife. I know his daughter. You know, I like him. You know, they're good human beings, you know? As we know, we all have kind of complicated relationships about all this. But I, I, I don't believe that, you know, I don't believe that the PD is out to hurt Chris. I think there's a lot of complicated relationships. And I just want to kind of give a, I want to acknowledge the hurt that his family is feeling, but I also kind of want to give a shout out to the PD because it's, it's complicated. It's, it's complicated when an adult goes missing. You don't really know why. So, and, and so with my other friend whose family, you know, had somebody missing for a few days, you know, in a certain sense, it almost gives the bad guys, if there was a bad guy involved. And I know that there wasn't a bad guy involved in one of them. I don't know if there was in the other. But it, it, waiting, a certain waiting period, I know why they do it, but it sort of, at least to the family, sort of feels like you might be giving a bad guy a head start, you know? And I, I understand why it has to be that way, but, you know, just that it hurts. And I, I just want to acknowledge that hurt, but also kind of stick up for the PD. Thank you.
My name is Scott Austin. I'm a new resident here. I just moved here from Texas a year ago. Chris is my friend. I just met him here at, at a church meeting. I do, it's a, it's a recovery group for addicts. I was a former addict myself. I, I give all glory to God for my redeeming me and bringing me out of a lot of dark places in my life. He's done a lot of good for me. And so I just had a quick message I wanted to share that I believe God's put on my heart. I just kind of happened to find myself here. I don't know. It's kind of, kind of weird, but I've never done something like this before. But I just wanted to read a passage from the Bible to you guys and bless you guys. Oh, I also just want to thank you guys for all the work you're doing. I appreciate. I hear you guys talking about the homeless. I love that. That's awesome. That's God's heart. He has, has a heart for the homeless and the broken and the lost. And so I commend you guys for doing that. And I just, please, continue to do that. And I just wanted to read this passage, please. There's some harsh language in it. It's just from the Book of Revelation. It's, it's a letter from Jesus to the churches. And it's kind of harsh, but, and I don't, please, nobody take it too personally. But I just want you all to take this to heart, listen to it, consider it, maybe take it home to your families and think about it. This is how I feel, about how I feel about the Christian church in America right now. So I just want to read this to you guys. It says, "These are the words of the amen, the faithful, and the true witness, the ruler of God's creation. I know your deeds that you are neither hot and neither cold nor hot. I wish you were either one or the other. So because you are lukewarm, neither hot nor cold, I'm about to spit you out of my mouth. You say, 'I am rich. I've acquired wealth and do not need a thing.' But you do not realize that you are wretched, pitiful, poor, blind, and naked. I counsel you to buy from me gold refined in the fire, so you can become rich, and white clothes to wear, so you can cover your, cover your shameful nakedness, and salve to put on your eyes, so you can see. Those whom I love, I rebuke and discipline. So be earnest and repent. Here I am. I stand at the door and knock. If anyone hears my voice and opens the door, I will come in and eat with that person and they with me. To the one who is victorious, I will give the right to sit with me on my throne, just as I was victorious and sat down with my father on his throne. Whoever has ears, let them hear what the Spirit says to the churches. God bless you all. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you. God bless your families." Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's it for speaker cards?
Yes, that's correct. We do not have any more speaker cards.
Okay, public hearings. There are no public hearings. All right, administrative reports. We're gonna get very administrative around here. The first one is City Hall Veterans Memorial Enhancement, project number FC 2023-06 Outreach and Survey Results. Tracy Martin, our Assistant Director of Utilities, will present this items, will present this item. And Tracy, where is Tracy? There's Tracy.
Thank you. I didn't receive that promotion. I'm just a senior project manager, though. So thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Richens and City Council. Thank you very much.
Say, congratulations, the mayor has given you a promotion.
I think there's, I think this spot's already filled. I know. Thank you very much.
Congrats.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I'm looking forward to talking to you about the project, where we've, where we've been and where we hope to go. The ask tonight is that the city council select a conceptual design for the Veterans Memorial Enhancement Project. So briefly, we'll go over the background of the project, some of the outreach efforts that we performed, those results, and some recommendations we'd like to make, and the next steps for the project. So, you know, the background is that the Veterans Memorial Monument, as it exists out there currently outside City Hall, was built in November 2012. A little bit of time elapsed, and then the city heard from some groups in the veterans community that they'd like to see some changes made. The, the monument, they felt was kind of hidden away. No one knew about it. It wasn't very inviting. So after some discussion and some presentations, you all agreed to move forward with some changes to the project, and you provided some funding. And so we went out, we did an RFP for some design services, and in July, we presented some, three options to your group, or to your team, to the council. And at that time, we were asked to go out to the veterans community and actually listen to the veterans and hear which option they preferred. So that's what we did. These are the three options that we originally presented. The first one, Option A is Service to Country. It's really noted by how patriotic and colorful it is. It has flags along the walkway, around the semicircular walkway in the back. And it has an experiential archway, a slanted granite monument that would put names of fallen soldiers to be remembered, as well as a stained concrete symbol in the middle of the veterans' square. Option B is titled Honor and Glory. That contains amphitheater seating, some granite signage to direct people to the monument area. area, a mosaic tile emblem in the middle of the Veterans Square, as well as flag placement in the middle of the Veterans Square. And lastly, Option C, Solitude and Remembrance. That contains concrete panels that would lead to the site. It's got some unique flag placements around the various walkways, part of it's around this semicircular walkway, the other part's leading from the courthouse to the area. And it contained a nighttime projection of names, um, into the monument area. So let's talk about the outreach efforts. Before I get into that, I did wanna say a big thank you to some people from the community that have been pushing this project forward, and they were really dedicated to the process of the outreach. They didn't really care which option was selected, they were just happy that the project was moving forward. So just a big thank you to Johnny and Ellie Griffiths, Don Kindred, Tom and Mary Ann Sherman, and Richard Cortez, because they were very helpful in helping find different groups and just getting word out about the survey and the work that the city's doing. We developed a paper survey, as well as an online survey, that we, um, distributed to various groups. We outreach to veterans through several different efforts. We approached the U.S. Veterans Affairs Department, we reached out to both American Legion posts, we went to Vets Connect at the Public Library, the Veterans Honoring, Honoring Veterans Group, and then, um, we did contact about 200, um, participants in the Military Banner Program to try to get their, um, their preference about which monument or which style that they would like. And we also did outreach through social media. Results and recommendations. So from the survey, we heard from five of the six branches of the military. We did have a time, we asked them when they served. So we heard from people who served for a span of 75 years, which I think is pretty remarkable. The results pointed to Option B, um, with 67 votes. We received a total of 117 for the survey. And we didn't just ask them which option they wanted, we asked for some written feedback as well. We wanted to know, what did you like about the option you picked? And was there anything else that you liked from any of the other options? So that if we did make any changes, we didn't eliminate something that people really liked or that we could incorporate something if the opportunity arose with one of the other designs. The most popular items, you know, people commented on were, of course, the amphitheater seating, they really liked that idea. The experiential archway was very, you know, they thought it was very cool. Most people liked the patriotic colors from Option A, those flowers, the symbol that's in the walkway. They preferred the flags around the semicircular walkway. And really what import, what was really important too was the slanted granite monument for names of fallen soldiers. That was very important to a lot of people. And, uh, people did mention the bronze statue because that was something typical with most veterans' memorials. So we're here tonight to recommend proceeding with Option B, but with some slight changes. Based on the feedback that we got, what we'd like to do is move the military flags from being in the center of the square out to the walkway. We'll adjust the height down to 50 foot, uh, for the poles, they don't need to be as high as they are in the original designs. We'd like to use the colorful features from Option A in the Veterans Square area. We'll include the slanted granite monument for the names of soldiers that have perished. And we'd like to, for you to consider, this is not included in the existing scope, modification of the existing archways that are there, either to remove them or somehow minimize them. Because if you're gonna put in an amphitheater and you sit down on those steps and you look in, you just see the arches, you really don't see the monument. So what we'd like to do is, is get rid of them if we can. They're not structural, so it wouldn't be as difficult as you think. Uh, we got a quote, it would probably be around $25,000 to $30,000 to remove them, but we, it's not included in the current budget. Some other options that we wanted to provide were to consider allowing veterans' groups to fundraise for some additional elements that we couldn't fit into the existing options, such as the bronze statue, or if we don't remove the arches, the experiential archway. So this is Option B as originally presented, and this is what we'd like to go with the modified version of Option B. So we'd kinda be keeping a colorful portion from Option A in the Veterans Square area and keep the more solitude and contemplative area in the Veterans Cove.
Tracy, real quick, where are the archways on this that you're talking about?
Can you see? I, I don't have a pointer. You know where the, the fountain and the monument are?
Yeah.
Just below that, you see the, uh, the two rows of lines with the, uh-
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's two arches that are set apart from each other, um, with three archways. Next steps, what we'd like to do is get your input on how to finalize the design, move forward with construction plans for the winter, and hopefully by next summer, start bidding and construction process. So our ask tonight is that you select a conceptual design for the Veterans Memorial Enhancement Project. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. You guys cool with public comments before questions? Okay. Sylvia, can we open it up? Do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Well, there you go. I was gonna have Mary Ann Sherman announce that her son is a major general yesterday, but she's not coming up. So I'll announce it. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Martin, this is exactly what I was hoping for. When we went through this, you know, a couple months ago, um, I was really pretty vocal about wanting direction from our veterans' group because this is their memorial. I'm not a veteran, so I don't have a point of reference or any skin in the game. And so I think, um, I, I'm very appreciative that you took the time to meet with them, to get all the feedback, and I love the hybrid B model that has a few tweaks and changes based on that feedback. So, uh, thank you, Ms. Martin. I wanna thank, you know, Johnny and Ellie Griffiths, Don Kindred, the Shermans, Dicky Griffin back there, or Diffy, Dicky Cortez back there, sorry, um, because I appreciate all the hard work that they did in reaching out to the veterans, both young and old, and, um, making sure that this is something moving forward that will honor our veterans properly. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Wesley?
Yeah, perfect. This is exactly what we asked. And it's interesting, I stood out there the other day, after we got this, I drove by over the weekend, and I thought the same thing. I'm like, well, if you're gonna be standing here, you're gonna be looking right at the arches. So thank you for catching that, I don't know who did, um, but that was, uh, that was astute. I, I love B, I think it's great, I love the recommendations that you've made, and thank you again to all the veterans, um, who gave input, and I know you reached out quite far, because I heard from folks I didn't even know were veterans, that said, hey, are you voting on this? So, thank you.
No rules, Casillas?
Oh, no.
Chime in on this?
Ms. Martin, thank you for committing, um, so much time as well, and being just so intentional about, um, engaging the community and being there present. I think that made a big difference, you know, attending these meetings, having these meetings, going and partnering with the groups that we have. So, um, I appreciate your, uh, personal attention to the execution of this plan. I also really, really am grateful for the feedback from our local veterans and our veterans' groups and our, um, military groups. I'm very excited about the amphitheater seating and about the potential of bringing in, you know, students to this memorial to learn, um, you know, the importance of service and military service and honoring our military service members. And so I think it's a space for our veterans, for sure, to have a memorial, but it's also like a connecting space. And I'm, I'm really excited about what that's gonna look like. So, thank you.
Jim?
Tracy, good job. I know that wasn't easy, trying to, you know, listen to everybody's opinions and then formulate it all down into one proposal, but you did really good, so thank you. I do also wanna thank the OG team in Back for, for making it happen. It was because of you guys that we're here today. I did have one question though, I, or one comment. I think we need to find a way to remove those archways now, right up front, not get everything all beautiful, then come back in a year and tear it down. 25 or 30 grand, we can find that kinda money, I think. So, it's my recommendation.
I think we can shake out some couch cushions and look for some-
All right, you make him the vice mayor and he just runs away with it, doesn't he? Can we open public comments back up and-
Mayor, yes, and we do have two speaker cards for this item.
How about that? Johnny?
First of all, I wanna say thank you so very, very much for recognizing the veterans in this city. We have a fine city, a great city. We have great people here that do their very best to make sure that we are all taken care of. Uh, I thank you, Mr. Richens, for your new, uh, being the mayor, Mr. Steiner, everybody, Wesby, for Mr. Tony DiTaro, everybody, for Jackie. Thank you guys for what you do. This is an honor that will make us proud for years and years to come. I may not see it happen in my time, I pray that I'll be here, but if I don't, thank you guys for remembering us. Because as history speaks, if we forget our past, we have no future. So thank you for not forgetting us. Thank you.
Johnny? Johnny, you, you, there's not a choice, you need to be here for when the unveiling is. So, I'm not allowed to order you, but that's a direct order, so.
Well, I take orders from the higher up, yes sir, I'll be there if it's possible.
Thank you.
We know your wife. Go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Pretty hard to follow this guy right here, I'll tell you. But again, from my heart, from our family's heart, uh, thank you very much for what you've done. Thank you very much for accepting, uh, uh, a new beginning, if you wanna say that here, at our old stomping grounds that I've been at for quite a few years. So I greatly, greatly appreciate the heartfelt and the interest that was taken in to bring this together. We greatly appreciate what you do. God bless all of you. And, uh, Tom, thanks for that comment earlier. A little shout out to the son making, uh, Major General. What an accomplishment. It all is a reflection of this city, so thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Johnny, again?
You thought I was gonna be done. Jackie, er, thank you for all that you have done, Tracy. You're outstanding. You represent us as veterans, even though you are not a veteran, in your heart, you're our great patriot. We thank you. You work so hard for us, thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure getting to know the community, so when you say it was hard work, it really wasn't, it was really an honor and very humbling, by the way, because I realize that they have so much energy and they're working so hard for each other, so it's been a great experience, actually. So thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Uh, Jackie's gonna cry. I actually know a guy that can modify walls and arches if we need to. But I, I agree with Jim, I think you find the 30,000 or whatever dollar amount is to, removing the arches will make it right. I, I did wanna give my comments, I was thinking about this the other day. There's been many, many Coronans who have left to serve in the military, some during peacetime and many during wartime. And I can't imagine, or I can imagine what it's like to leave a war zone or overseas and return to your home city. Just the buildup, the return to safety, the return to community, and so to build this monument better will honor those people and future people. So with that, we'll close proceedings. We won't close proceedings?
Mayor, could I just, uh, offer up, uh, maybe, um, let me make a motion that we get started with the recommended, uh, option, along with removing the archways?
I'll second it. Can we do that, Sylvia? And Jacob?
City manager said yes.
Okay, Jacob says. All right, do I have a motion for, well, that's Jim's motion. Do we, did anybody say, did you guys push buttons already?
You seconded.
I seconded it.
You did.
All right, well then, can we vote? Good job, Jim. Good job, me. All right, uh, number 30, Administrative Report, City Council to review the three proposed facade renderings for the fire station number two, rebuild project and provide feedback. Chief Young will present this item.
Well, I'm happy to be here. It's been, uh, a long time coming, quite a journey this project's been. Did have some self-realization through this process that I have absolutely zero desire to go into real estate when I'm done with this job. Did some, some, uh, long-term negotiations. So what they ask us this evening is to have the council review the proposed facade renderings for Station Two's rebuild. One thing nice about this is it's a lot of pictures, so it's very, um, very friendly for the, for the end user. Hopefully, it won't, uh, yield as much debate as the water tank we had a few years ago, but I think this will be a little bit, uh, nicer. We'll be talking, a little review of the existing site, the proposed layout that we've already established, provide you three different options with renderings. You'll be a street, uh, street view elevation, uh, both sides and the rear, as well as a 3D, um, view. And then we'll just kinda give a quick overview of, of where we're going after, hopefully we have a relatively easy decision. So just a reminder of the existing site, um, you know, this was our intent from the get-go. However, early in this process, we, we met, uh, a lot of problems with staying here. However, it's been finally mitigated and happy to say that we're staying at the current site, uh, which will best suit our needs. Very, very excited about this process finally coming to fruition. The original site was 1.05 acres and the additional site we're acquiring is .65. So it surpasses the minimum need of one and a half acres, so very excited. Just a reminder of the design requirements, this is, this is obviously supporting one of our busiest, most, um, complex firehouses, just due to the, the volume of programs and equipment that respond out of there. The new station will be approximately 16,000 square feet and have potential housing for up to 18 firefighters. That would really be indicative of a surge capacity, so a prime example would be when we have significant wind events, we upstaff, um, to anticipate those needs. So that would be the only time you'd see that volume of people there, but we did wanna have that enhanced capacity if possible. We wanna make sure that, um, the designs would fit into the surrounding area, make sure they meet the North Main specific plan, and then ultimately, um, support all of the specialty resources that we have housed at the station. You'll see the two different plans there, the intent of that is just to kinda give you a snapshot that it's gonna be, uh, two different, uh, buildings there. So the primary fire station is the 16,000 square foot, um, large building in the front, and the back will basically be a very large metal storage building for all of our specialty programs and, uh, various apparatus. So you'll see there's three distinct, um, stylistic differences with these renderings, and we'll kinda walk through those, um, and obviously we'll go back and forth if you have a desire to do so. The first one has kind of like a more industrial look, if you will, kinda that, that barnish look on the left side there. Pretty straightforward on the other elevations. Same thing with the 3D rendering. Option B would be a wonderful fit, uh, for Palm Springs, I'm thinking, with a little mid-century modern vibe to it. You could see the, uh, the aesthetic with the roof there. Some of our guys said it looks like a butterfly, but it is kinda cool. Once again, here's the other, uh, elevations, and then the 3D rendering. And then lastly, is, is staff recommendation, and, and the reason, I'll give you a little preface of why this was our recommendation, is, is the ultimate desire, um, for many of the city staff, as well as the Fire Department, was to have a traditional, uh, fire station, almost like the storybook, uh, look to a fire station, since this is our, our battalion headquarters where we house all of our units, that was our desire. So this is the one, and we fielded the inquiries from our staff, um, that they chose, uh, as far as what they liked the most. You can see it's traditional, red brook face with arched doorways and just kind of has that more, you see that building and you know that's a fire station. So this is actually updated a little bit as far as next steps. This is obviously, we're now in winter as far as finalizing the design development. And once again, that was due to an additional real estate negotiation delay. So this was going to be presented to you several months back, but we're finally at this point where we're sharing this with you. In spring, we'll start the pre-purchase process for long lead items, and then we'll start the, the aggressive preparation in summer is our targeted timeframe there. So just remember, the ask is to just have your feedback and see what, what the council thinks about the three different options that are afforded to you. And we can kind of go back and forth if you want to see different things. Hopefully, you already had a chance to kind of preview it, and this wasn't the first time that you saw the pictures, but we're excited to finally be here. Open the comments.
All right, thank you, Chief. Let's go to public comments. I'm guessing Dale will be first.
Mayor, I have three speaker cards for this item.
And we have three speaker cards.
Thing about this, I'm kind of fond of Palm Print, Palm Springs designs and the butterfly roof. But I don't know if any of you have been down on Chapman in the city of Orange? And they're fired, they have a new fire station, and it looks very, very similar to the third rendition. And it really is impressive. It fits in. It's historic. I think that would be an obvious, good choice.
Thanks, Dale. Tony?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Tom, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. You're going to have a fun next year. And good job, Mr. DiDario as, as mayor. You did a great job. Proud of you. Anyway, so this has been long coming, over a year since we approved the contract. And now we're finally at, I don't know, schematic, design development stage, somewhere in there. Couple of things that wasn't in the presentation that I want to give my observations on. So the RFP had a budget of about $9 million. There's about 24,000 square feet of new construction here. 16,000 for the fire station, approximately 8,000 for the building. We're talking 24,000 square feet. On average, 800 bucks a square foot, $19.2 million. The RFP was $9 million. You are $10 million over budget right now. I don't know if you guys have talked about this at all, but expect it. It's coming. It appears that your program and your budget are not friends. You have more program than you do budget. So you either reduce the program or increase the budget or do a combination thereof. This is coming. Next. Out of the elevations, nothing was drawn or shown about the floor plans for either building, and the back building was ignored. It's just part of the site plan. There's four, four full bays. They look to be about 75 to 80 feet deep in the main station. And there are six 60-foot bays in the back. That's a lot of storage. I assume they're building the rear building to house the apparatus while they live in mobiles in the back so they can demo the existing station and build the new one in front. I'm assuming that's the game plan. It's the way I would do it. So that leads me to pre-purchase of long lead type items. The only thing that I know of that's long lead is switchgear. Switchgear's a problem. It's 52 weeks in the current station that I'm working on right now that's under construction. So that being said, you're going to pre-purchase items before construction documents are complete. Well, that's possible if you estimate all the loads and everything else. Thing is, this is about a year and a half worth of construction. It's a big station. There's a lot of work there, and it's phased. So 52 weeks, yeah, you can probably just put it under the contract. Why preorder? It's a little bit of a risk. Owner furnished, contractor installed, you might make a mistake, and then it's on you guys to buy new gear, and if it gets delayed even more if it's a mistake. I'm curious, what, what are the pre-purchased items besides gear? Anyway, oh, the butterfly roof. Yeah, don't do that. Don't, don't drain water into itself into the middle of the building. Don't do that. The chosen one is probably the more expensive of the three, though I do like it, I got to admit. The brick is pretty expensive, adds cost. They did be something very interesting in that they did bi-fold doors in the front and roll-ups in the back. That's a good move. So, yeah, let's go. I'd like to see this built. Thank you.
Joseph?
Good evening. I would, there we go. I would like to see a little less monument building when it comes to public buildings. That you don't need an ostentatious building in this neighborhood in particular. This is, this is an industrial neighborhood. And to put all the foo-foo and gingerbread on the front of this building, it doesn't need to be there. You know, this is money that could be spent elsewhere. This is money that you're probably going to need to build the building. You don't need the extra expense for the extra decoration in order to make it look like a fire station. It's not an amusement park. And, and I think that efficiency should reign here. This is a utility building. So it's not a public gathering thing. It's not going to be on postcards, at least not from any of the public members. So you should try to save money where you can because this is likely going to be a very expensive facility. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. Sylvia, are there any other?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. We'll take it back from the public and bring it up here. Councilmember DiDario?
Yeah, I did not like the Palm Springs look either. But I was somewhere between one and two, I'm sorry, between one and three. And I think I liked three the most, which is funny because I remember several years ago, a, a young Tom Richens standing at the podium saying it costs $3 million to build a fire station. Yeah, so I would number three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. One, the zoning for that area is, is, at least the general plan zoning for that is multifamily. So we will see some change because there will be, will be some pressure there. So I think the aesthetic is, is not a bad idea, making something that, that looks pretty. And the other part is, and I, I've mentioned this to the city manager a few times, when you're hiring people or when you're getting people to stick around, pay is one thing. Your, who you work with is probably the most important. And then your equipment and your surroundings are, are really important. And I couldn't even imagine, you know, having to, to live in a place that, you know, wasn't, wasn't great. So I, I want to make sure that, that we don't skimp on some of these things. However, there is a cost component to this, and I think that, that Mr. Fanaldi hit it on the head, and I'm curious about that. Do we have an estimate on what it would cost to, to build?
No, not yet. A couple of important distinctions. When the RFP went out, it was not written to say we have $10 million and your, your expectation is that you build this entire fire station for $10 million. Obviously, that was our target amount of money. But over the last couple of years, I'm sure Mr. Fanaldi could validate this, the costs have gone up unfortunately. More specifically to the, the comment about the facade, we actually asked the architect that specifically, and he said it's not a substantial difference. He says, yes, there is an increased cost with the brick, but it's not going to be project-breaking and significant enough that you say this is, this is a deal breaker. And that was from the architect.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned about the brick. I think, I, I grew up in the masonry business. I know what brick costs. And it's not, I don't see it as a substantial thing. I did have just a larger question about the overall cost, so. That's all I had. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I guess maybe the follow-up is, you know, I know we'll be talking about finances in, in the spring, so I'm guessing that'll come back to us at some point. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I too was curious about the cost estimates. And since we're not there yet, but it's good to hear that it doesn't seem to be like that it'll be a substantial difference between A and C, which were the two that I was between as well. You know, I think that the facade and building a, a building that, you know, brings pride to community and the residents and our, and adds, you know, just that sense of pride, I think is a good thing. I think there's value to that. I know Riverside, when they built their new fire station in the downtown area, did the exact same thing, and it is beautiful as part of the downtown walkable area. Like, people literally take pictures outside of it. Anyhow, all that aside, I, I agree with the staff's recommendation. I personally like this one better. So option three.
Jim?
I'm good with option three.
Very eloquent. The, can we pull up the rendering for option three? The, the front. I will say this, never get in a fight with Steiner over the cost of fire stations. You will lose. I lost. And I was wrong. So for, this is just my own suggestion, if you guys want to run with it or not. The, where the flagpole is, I was wondering if the tower could be extended higher a little bit. I don't know if that breaks any zoning. And that tower be made a bell tower. No, not that much more. I just think it would look better if it, if it was, if the tower was raised and there was a bell. And then my other question is, does this fire station have a pole? Is it going to have a pole?
No, it's a single-story. And after working many years in a multi-story fire station contrary to what my guys want, it's not a good thing. If you can go single-story, that's the way to go. They wanted a pole bed. Maybe we can just put a pole on the tower that goes to nowhere. Just out of curiosity, what would the bell be for?
I just think it would look more historic. And, and you guys make the bells special, right? The first bell that was in a schoolhouse in Corona is still, we still have the bell. The bell is sitting at the district. I, I think bells make cities more special, and I think it's something to think about.
It could be the bell that's on, the, the design that's on front of one of the truck companies or that we used to ring for last call.
Yeah, so. Those are my recommendations. I hope you guys do it, but it's your call. So I'm, I'm all C. Where did Jackie go?
She ran away. She was, she heard all of this ridiculousness about picking colors and things, and she, she, she said, I'm out.
Okay, well, I, I think she would be confident with us voting without her. So with that, any other comments from you knuckleheads?
No, sir.
Okay, can we push a button for a motion or?
Do we need a, do we need a motion? Because I think we all unanimously selected option three.
I think that direction is enough for us at this point.
All right, there you have it. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, number 31. Receive and file the auditor's reports related to the fiscal year 2023 annual financial audits, auditor's communication annual comprehensive financial report, development impact fees annual report, and annual report on voter's voter-approved debt for fiscal year ending June 3, 2023. Frances Kuo?
Kuo.
Cool? From the Fun Group will present this item.
Yeah, that's where Tom wants to work, the Fun Group.
Yeah, I'd like that group.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the member of City Council and management here. My name is Frances Kuo. I'm the engagement partner for the audit of the city Corona fiscal year 23 financial statement. So in the presentation, I will go through the scope of work and couple required communication as part of audit requirement, overview of the financial statement, key pension and other post-employment information, and the audit results. So during the year, this, this year, we completed the audit for the city's financial statement audit, housing successor compliance audit, the trip reduction special revenue fund financial statement and compliance audit, agree upon procedure on the investment for March of 2023, and agree upon procedure on appropriation limit schedule, and also report on the internal control over financial reporting and compliance in accordance with the government auditing standards. So our, our responsibility in accordance with the AICP professional standard is to form opinion on the financial statement with your oversight of the financial statement. And so we plan to perform the audit to provide reasonable assurance. And during the audit process, it's a very lengthy process starting from April timeframe all the way till December. So during this entire audit process, we consider the city's internal control over financial reporting. And also, this consideration will help us determine and design the audit procedure for the, during the year-end audit process. And professional standard also require us to consider if there are any condition or event that will create a substantial doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern, and we are here to communicate with those who charge governance. So during the audit, at the beginning of the audit, we'll provide a communication letter during the planning to talk about our, our responsibility, as I discussed earlier. And at the conclusion of the audit, we also require to communicate additional communication. So we have fulfill our, comply with all the relevant ethical requirement regarding independence. So when we conduct the audit, we need to be independent in fact and appearance. And also because we assist in preparing the financial statement, we also need to evaluate management's skill, knowledge, and experience to maintain independence. And we are also required to communicate those significant accounting policies. So those significant accounting policy are described in Note 1 to the financial statements. During the year, the city also implement GASP statement number 96 related to subscription-based IT arrangement that bring on about $6 million of asset to the financial statement along with the liability to the financial statement. So it's a big implementation during the fiscal year. There are also a couple of significant estimate used to prepare the financial statement. The first will be the investment fair value, as the city invests in many types of investment. So the valuation of those investment are very important. And the depreciation, including amortization of those lease asset, the subscription assets are based on the estimate of the useful life. So those are estimate as used to, to report the capital assets. And of course, the big item are the net pension liability and net OPE liabilities. So there are also several sensitive disclosure. Of course, Note 1 talk about the accounting policy. And Note 2 talk about the stewardship, compliance, and accountability. Talk on the fund balances, talking about appropriation in comparison to the expenditures, 13 and 14 related to the city's pension and other post-employment benefit to the retirees, and 17 related to the commitment and contingencies. And we are also happy to report that there are no uncorrected statements for the fiscal year 23 audit. So during the audit, there might be some consultation that the management might have with other accountants or any difficulty encounter during audit. So we're happy to, to disclose that there's no other consultation that's needed with management, with other, with other accountant related to the audit or other matter. And there's no difficulty during the audit process, and we don't have any disagreement whether on the accounting treatment, what audit procedures perform. So it's a lot of the documentation, back and forth, a lot of analysis and the work with the management. It's, it's a lot of information, a lot of discussion. So we kind of work through all those transaction, also with implementation of GASP 96, and then working through some journal entries and then making sure the financial statement are fairly presented. So the next couple of slides are about the city's financial statement at high-level review. So the city as a whole ended the year with about $1.3 billion of net position. So that comprise of net investment in capital asset, which is the biggest component of your net position, which are invested in the capital asset, including the land infrastructure, those building equipment that the city own, net with the associated debt used to acquire those capital asset. And the middle row is the restricted net position, which are restricted from outside party, whether it's law regulation or grant requirement. So those are restricted for specific purpose on the outside, not within the city, but with outside requirement. And then the, the last item is unrestricted net position, which can be used at the city's discretionary. So the net investment in capital So the net investment in capital assets of over one billion dollars, the restricted net positions hundred fifty-seven million and unrestricted net position as twenty-eight million dollars for the year as of June thirty of twenty twenty-three. And this slide is the overview of the operation for the year. So the city's governmental activities and the business type activity combined. So the total expenses for the year, three hundred forty-six million dollars. So those are expenses that's incurred during fiscal year to provide services to the community, including the public safety, the, the library, the community event and then also the business type activities for the water sewer and electric. So those expenses needed to carry out those programs. And then at three hundred forty-six million dollars. And that the program revenue are the revenue that's used to support these expenses at two hundred thirty-six million dollars. So the net cost of service is a hundred eleven million dollars. So the city also had general revenue, those are unrestricted revenue from the tax revenue, from the investment earning. So the city has a hundred ninety, a hundred ninety-eight million dollars of general revenue to support these costs of services. So this, so the city ended the year with increasing net position of eighty-six million dollars. So the unrestricted tax revenue for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three was, was a hundred fifty-eight million dollars. So the cost of service to the tax revenue is eighty-seven percent. So this is a fund balance for the general fund, which is the main operating fund for the city. So uh, comparison from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So there is an increase of forty-four million dollars for the general fund. So you see some decreasing in the non-spendable category of fund balance because there are some pay down of the advances to other fund. So you have a less unspendable portion of the fund balance. And the restricted fund balance increased by five million dollars. So that's the pension trust fund that's been set aside. And then that's the investment earning that the city had during the year increased by five million dollars because of the earning. And then the, and the committed fund balance increased from forty-eight million to fifty-two million dollars to those are category committed by the city council for, you know, emergency for reserve. And so, and the assigned fund balance and unassigned fund balance. So those are now restricted fund balance that the city can use based on your discretion. So here is the operation for the general fund. So the general fund had the increase in the revenue from compared to prior year of twenty-eight million because the sales tax, the property tax, they all went up during the year. So there's an increase of revenue for twenty-eight million dollars. As you can see, the expenditure went down. That's mainly because of the pension, the pension obligation bond that was issued last year that's been put up, paid to CalPERS to pay down the unfunded liability that happened during the last fiscal year. And also you see there's a decrease in other financing sources that the proceed. So last year, there's a big proceed from the pension obligation bond used to pay down the unfunded liability and you don't see that this year. So you see big decrease in the expenditure and also big decrease in the other funding, other finance, financing sources. So the, so for twenty twenty-three, there's forty-four million dollar increase in fund balance for general fund. So here's the comparison of the pension plan. So the city has three plans, the miscellaneous plan, safety please and the safety fire. So right in the middle, the net pension liability, it went down from a hundred forty, a hundred sixty-four million to fifty-one million dollars in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three. So the reason I put twenty twenty-two out top because that's based on the measurement date of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one because there's a one-year delay in pension reporting. So the city has a funding ratio of ninety-six percent for the, this fiscal year reporting compared to eighty-one percent. So that's because you paid down the unfunded liability. So the, the actual funding actually going to the, your future net position to support the future pension payment. And the contribution amount, of course, went, went down compared to prior year because last year there's a big contribution to pay down the unfunded liability. So it went from two hundred ninety-one million dollars to twelve million dollars in twenty, twenty twenty-three. And this slide is about the other post implement benefit. So the, the net OPEB liability went from eighty-five million to ninety-three million dollars in also one year behind for the measurement day twenty twenty-two. So as you can see, that's also related to the investment earning. So in twenty-two, the investment earning wasn't doing so well. So the plan for the net position for the, for the OPEB asset actually has some losses. That's why it went down. So when you have a less asset set aside for future liability, so your net OPEB liability actually went up during twenty-three. And the contribution made in both fiscal year are about ten million dollars for both years. So that bring me to the audit result. So we issue unmodified opinion. So that means financial statement are fairly presented and accounting policy has been consistently applied. Estimates are reasonable and the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. And we didn't report any internal control matter that are, that need, that need to be communicated to the, to the city council. With that conclude my presentation, I'm more than happy to answer any question you may have.
All right, thank you. Do any of my council members have questions?
The fifty-one million dollars in the pension liability, that, that's depressing to see. I know we talked about it before, but I don't, I thought the number was twenty-eight. Did it, did it get corrected to fifty-one or did I remember that wrong?
There's some reporting differences in how they have to be reported in the financial statements as compared to when we're looking at the actuarial reports. There are some differences there in, in how that gets reported.
And that's, that's, that's the balance, right? Because it's, it's a year behind. So thinking of what the market was doing a year ago compared to what it's doing now.
Right, and some of that newer information we've given you is on the updated actuaries that we had just received in, in August.
Okay, and then we're continuing to make our, the payments as we were before. It's, so that, that, hmm, what's the word I'm looking for? It tweaks the, the end number where we thought we were going to be done in eleven years. It could, depending on what happens next year.
It could, yes, definitely. And that's something we'll be discussing with the, that pension management board that we have bringing you back information in, at our mid-year update about some recommendations about how we're gonna address the, now that we have that new actuarial report since we had issued the, the bonds.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just bummed to see that, but I get it. Thanks.
All right, Jackie? Jim? Sylvia, are there any uh, public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
All right, um, Ms. Kuo, Kuo, thank you and, and thank you.
Thank you too.
We don't need to vote on that, right?
Correct, this is a receive and file item.
That's what I thought it was. Okay, legislative matters, there are none. Boards and commissions, reports from the city council, commissioners, staff, library staff for the, I get it. Library Board of Trustees, there are no reports. Planning and Housing Commission, there is a report. So number thirty-two, conditional use permit modification two thousand one, two thousand twenty-one to zero 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 four for the revision to the site plan and architectural design for senior citizen housing consisting of sixty-two units on two point four, one four acres in the R-three multiple family residential zone. Originally approved by conditional use permit seventeen dash zero zero four, do I have to read all this? Located at one fifty-nine North Buena Vista Avenue, APN one eighteen, two nine zero dash zero four nine. Applicant Malad Olan on behalf of Pierre Saad. Does any council member want a staff report on this item? And Tony does. Joanne Coletta, Planning and Development Director, will present this item.
Good evening and thank you. As the mayor indicated, this is a conditional use permit application. And I just want to point out the location to give everybody an exact idea of where this property is located. It is located on the east side of Buena Vista Avenue, just north of State Route ninety-one. This exhibit here is the zoning exhibit. The property in question is highlighted in red. The zoning of the property is currently zoned R-three. What that means is it's multi-family residential. You can also see there are other identifying zones in the surrounding area. We do have some single-family zoning across the street as well as adjacent to the project site as well as some zoning that is categorized as R-two, which is also a multi-family residential zone just at a lower density and some additional R-three zoning. So this is just a real quick project description for you. As the mayor indicated, this is for a conditional use permit modification to allow senior housing up to sixty-two apartments. The total size of the project site is just over two acres. The minimum age restriction that is proposed is sixty years and that was the age limitation that was put on the project back in twenty eighteen. The zoning designation as well as the general plan does allow up to thirty-six dwellings to the acre. However, when it comes to senior housing, Corona does have an additional density for senior housing, which is up to seventy-five dwellings to the acre. This project is proposing twenty-nine dwelling units to the acre. So it's still within the parameters of the general plan. There are thirty-three one-bedroom units proposed for this project and twenty-nine two-bedroom units proposed for this project. So what I wanted to do is just provide a side-by-side comparison for the council so they understand what the changes are from the previously approved project to now. The site plan that you see on the left was what was approved in twenty eighteen and you can clearly see there that there was one building proposed to house all sixty-two units. That was a three-story building that was located to the rear of the property. The driveway locations do remain the same. As you saw on the aerial exhibit, there are some single-family homes that do about this property. So it actually, those homes are now being surrounded by this infill property. The new proposal shows the sixty-two units being broken up into three different buildings. And there are some different heights proposed. The three-story element is staying to the rear of the property. There is also a one-story element as well, which are for some bungalow units. And then towards the front of the property there, next to Buena Vista, there is a two-story element that is proposed and that's about just over a hundred feet in length. And that is to actually, just to tear down the building height as you come along Buena Vista and also, so it's not so overwhelming to the adjacent single-family home. This exhibit here shows you the parking design between the two options. So back in twenty eighteen, the project only provided a hundred and six spaces. At the time, our parking ordinance only required parking for the residential units. There was no guest parking component. So the project required ninety-three spaces. At the time, the developer provided a hundred and six. So they actually did provide thirteen additional spaces. With the proposed design, our parking ordinance was changed in twenty twenty-two. So the developer this time actually complies with our current ordinance. Not only do you have to provide parking for the residents, you also have to provide guest parking. And they did do that. The requirement is a hundred and eight spaces and this project will be providing a hundred and twenty-one spaces. So there is a surplus of parking in this plan. There is also tuck-under parking that is being proposed. That did not originally exist with the prior plan. That means that there is parking underneath the building towards the back there and I've kind of highlighted that location. The project was originally gated and it will remain to be gated from both Buena Vista Avenue. The driveway that you see to the right will allow for ingress and egress. But the driveway that you see to the left will be an exit-only gate for residents. This is just a comparison of the amenities between the two designs. As you see on the original approval, the amenities were concentrated and they were placed next to the existing properties and there was about a four-foot landscape buffer there. And then there was a multipurpose room in the central building area. This design is actually spreading out the amenities within the project and it actually increases the landscape buffer adjacent to the homes by ten feet. And it also doubled the size of the multipurpose room. So this has just been spread out a little bit on the new proposal. This is a cross-section showing the building height in relation to the surrounding properties. The one you see there on the top is if you are standing on Buena Vista and looking east. This is actually a cut-through image, that building version that you see in the front that is colored, that is the two-story element of the apartment complex. With the original proposal, the site was required to be dropped down about three or five feet. That is because we wanted to keep in height with the building to the south, which is a two-story apartment building. So by dropping the project site, you can actually align the height of the building with that existing building and that remains to be the case with this proposal as well. And then you're also seeing the relationship with the single-story residents there to the left. And then that gray area in the back is showing the three-story structure. When you move to the south, that is the three-story element to the back of the property, which shows it in relation to the property to the north. So it just kind of gives you a, a perspective view. With the original design, everything was internal. There were internal corridors to each of the units, probably similar to like a hotel style. What the new design does, it actually provides exterior entrances to the units, which is more traditional of apartments. So it's just a covered walkway that you see there to the left compared to the walkway or corridor design that you see to the right on the old project. So it's very similar. You would walk up to your floor and then you would have an exterior entrance into your unit rather than walking into a building and going down a corridor hallway. This is just an example of the landscape plan that was provided for the project. The Planning Commission did discuss this and there was a condition of approval added that the trees along the existing perimeter of the existing residence be increased in size to thirty-six inch box and they have agreed to do that. And they will be looking at landscaping for the canopy-type trees to further provide that buffer. This here is the architectural design that they came back with. It was previously Spanish Mediterranean. They went with more of just modern type design. But this is a stucco facade facility, very traditional of what we see in other areas. And this here is just showing you, there was discussion on the improvements to Buena Vista. Buena Vista will be widened adjacent to the project site on the driveway that is to the south. As you notice there to the south where you have the existing apartments, it will actually align with the improvements that were already put there. But then it will transition back out to its current condition. The city does not have the entire right-of-way along that side of the street, especially to the house that is next door. We did explore that. Obtaining that right-of-way will actually remove portion of that neighbor's front yard. It will take out their fencing, some of their driveway as well as their lawn area. So we have just kept it adjacent to the project, which is they were only responsible for. But we did explore that because the applicant was willing to widen it up into the second driveway if, if the right-of-way was there, but we just did not have that secured at this time. And right now, so the recommendation is for the city council to affirm the decision that was made by the Planning and Housing Commission and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coletta. Should we go with comments or, all right. Ms. Edwards, are there any public comments?
Mayor, yes, I have two speaker cards. One is from a resident and then the second speaker card is from the applicant.
Okay. Joe, you want to go first?
Good evening again. So here we are again with this same mess of a project. It, it's funny to hear saying, well, it's going down to single story, so that makes it lower. It actually makes it higher because in the original plan, there wasn't anything there. It was set in the back and it was more concentrated in the center of the lot in order to, to make it less impactful on the neighbors around it. This whole thing was kind of carefully crafted mess that was sort of agreed to kind of at knife point, I guess, with all the neighbors very much up in arms. And then to say, well, tell you what, well, we're just gonna have one three-story part here and then another two-story part and then spread it out. But we're keeping it low, so it's gonna match everything else. You're still spreading it out and you're still deviating away from the original intention of this, which was supposed to be affordable, market-rate senior housing, of which we have a really dire need. And so now, oh, well, more parking, which we all know parking just adds to the cost. And we're gonna have more amenities, which adds to the cost. And, you know, we're deviating away from the affordable, market-rate senior housing thing, plus spreading it out. thing, plus spreading it out. They're basically just trying to sort of upscale this thing, and to go back and change it is, you know, sort of throwing them a lifeline for a crappy project. They made the decision not to acquire those houses. They had one of those houses. They bought that house in front, and they had an offer from the neighbor next to him. And so they're going to say, "Well, we weren't involved with that." But they said differently at the planning commission, so it was, "Well, we did this, and we did that, and we couldn't get this, and we couldn't get that." They were involved with this whole thing, and this isn't just, "Well, the previous applicant this, and the previous applicant that." This guy is disingenuous. He's dishonest. He's disreputable. The first, and he's actually under investigation from the Board of Architects, because he's representing himself as an architect. So, you know, you shouldn't believe anything that they say, and you should either build this right or don't build it. They have an application. They can build it. They can build what was originally approved. You're under no obligation to throw them a lifeline. Their thing expires in, what, a few months? You know? Build it, put up or shut up, you know? Build the thing, or don't build the thing. You know, there's no, you have no obligation to throw them a lifeline. Let them build it right. Let them acquire the houses. Let them acquire the real estate. Let them do it right. Let them do something that, where you can have a street that's the right width. Let them build a project where you can have a straight sidewalk, you know? This is just one compromise after another after another for a crappy project that even, you know, it doesn't matter how many, how high the trees are, it's a crappy project. It's ugly, it's bad, it's not built right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Do you guys want to speak now, or do you want to wait till there's questions from the council members? I think they're just here to speak.
The second one was for the applicant.
Okay. Will the applicant come speak?
Good evening. My name is Milad Wisen. I'm the applicant of the project, and first, I would like to thank Joanne. She did go over the project, and her help was tremendous during the process, and I'm here to answer any of your questions if you might have.
Okay, thank you. Tony?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm concerned about how close the two-story buildings are to the apartments that are just to the south, and regardless of the buffer, you know, I have a lot of concerns about that. And then I have a safety concern about external entrances versus the internal entrances. Somebody following somebody in late at night or something along those lines if they don't have to go through a security door or something to get into the interior of the building. Those are my concerns. And then I wanted to know about both of the exits that are proposed. Is a left turn allowed out of those exits? Because I think that's going to be a blind turn for some people coming out, trying to make a left onto an already small congested street.
Yes, you can make a left turn out of that driveway.
Is there a way that we could prevent that from happening?
I could talk to our traffic division about that if, I can definitely bring that up with them, but they did not put that restriction on the project.
Okay. You know, I wasn't here in 2018 to vote on this, but I just really have a lot of concerns about the closeness of the proximity of some of these buildings to the apartments to the south, and it seems it's going to be built on, really close to some of those houses that are still there that were not able to be acquired. I'm not a big fan of this project at all. I can't see voting, myself, I can't see voting forward for this project, so.
Actually, can I say something? In the previous proposed, previous approved project, the building was set back 50 feet from the existing residence. In our proposed new project, we are really, we are set back by 56 feet. So we are away farther back from the existing residential.
That's just two of the buildings. The other buildings are now closer to the residential, that is, to the south, and the apartments. Is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Yeah. I don't think that, I don't think that helps out the cause any. I mean, you know, I can see all kinds of things that are going to, that are going to, I could foresee things that are going to be coming down from some of the neighbors or even some of the residents complaining about the apartments or something along those lines. It just doesn't seem to me like it's a great project and not a great design.
Thank you, Tony. Wes?
Thank you. I had similar concerns, but I don't know if you're going to, you have any more to share, but the outside entrances is something that I'm also concerned about.
Actually, the entire project is secure. We, and if you, if we go back a little bit with the slides, you will see that the previous even, the previous location of the main gate was unsupervised, and that's because the management office was all the way inside that building. What we did, we moved the management office all the way to the outside, right close to the entrance, so there is absolutely no way on earth that you enter this project without going through the management office first. This is one. Second, are we talking about like the entrance to the actual units itself now, or the actual project? Because the project is, as I said, is completely secure. Now, as far as the unit themselves, the difference in between us, the old design has 225 linear feet of completely enclosed dark corridor, leading to, at each floor, we have a 62 unit. So basically, you have an average of like 20 unit per floor. So you have a one of two option, and you tell me which one is the right one. It's like you walk 250 feet in the dark, even the day, where there is no light, there is no natural light. You have to turn on the light and to enter to your unit, or you actually can walk on outside and enter to each unit during the day without the need of any light, and as I said, every, you have more privacy. You're not, you're not going through in front of the rest of the units. You don't have units like that are set on the left and on the right. I really, I don't know exactly if the, if you can compare in between.
Well, sir, I don't, I don't think that's a great, that's a great argument, and we have a really, I mean, if you look just down the street at 111 Main Street, all their interior, they're all interior door entries, all of them. And there's, how many hundred? 500 of them at Metro at Main? Yeah, there were 500 units, and they're all interior entrances, and been down many of them over the years since it's been built, and I didn't, I didn't see a, I didn't feel like I was unsafe or, or that it was dark because there were lights. Could you go back to the amenity slide? I saw this during the, the planning commission, I think the second meeting. I had some, and then you had some better pictures, I think, in the, in the planning commission slide, that I, I saw that some of these outside, like the outdoor exercise equipment, those areas that they're, they're outside, but they're underneath the buildings.
We have an atrium if.
I'm sorry? A what?
We have an atrium in, in the building. Now, if we move to the slide that actually it shows the interior of the, of the building, you can see that we have an atrium that is open to the sky. So all the activities or the amenities that you see right in the middle, they are within that atrium, and they are open all the way to the sky. And as I said, if we move to the, to the.
Is that, is that for the amenity number two? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, like here, like here. If you, on the, on the, on the proposed side of the project, you, we have the two buildings. We have a two building. The third building is just one, one story with five units, so we didn't show it here. But as you can see, like in one of the building, the one in the middle, it clearly shows where the walkways are, the opening to below, which is opening to the atrium below, the, the location of the elevators and the stairs. The second one, the building on the left also, it shows where the, the walkways are and how they are open also to the atrium below, where you have also the rest of the amenities too. And this atrium is actually, goes through the three floors. It's not just one floor only, or, so it goes through the building all the way up.
Okay. So my question was on this, because I, I think in one of the drawings I saw that it looked like, you know, you could, you had a pull-in, a pull-in parking space with a, with a apartment above it, and then next to it was shuffleboard, and there, there wasn't a divider. I don't know, they couldn't tell what the depths were.
Yeah, this, the building, that rectangular building, let me refer to them as a rectangular building and an L-shaped building to make it easy. Now, you are, you are referring to this building, the rectangular building.
I'm referring to any of your outdoor amenities that are, that are open, that are outdoor amenities. Are they, can you see them from, if you're standing in the parking lot, can you see them?
Yes.
Okay. So typically, someone's going to pull their car in, and then there's, there's right next to them, they're going to be playing shuffleboard, or?
They, like, in this example, the shuffleboard, there is like a seven-feet walk, walk area and the landscape area between the edge of the parking and the shuffleboard.
So it'll be like a parking stop, and then seven feet of, of?
Between landscape and, and.
And then the amenity.
And walkways before you even get to the shuffleboard.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Casillas?
I don't have any questions.
Council, Vice Mayor Steiner?
Well, are we doing questions or comments or anything?
Hey, let it go.
All right. So, just so I got a good grasp on this here. So this project was already approved in 2018, CUP in 2018. And Joanne, correct me, please, if I speak out loud. So it's already approved. So it's whether we allow them to build the project that was already approved, or we allow them to build this new design, this new look. So, and I've conferred with my planning commissioner, Karen Alexander, about this as well to make sure that I understood this. But, so you wanted to get it to 55 and older, is what I heard, but you wanted to take it from 60 to 55, and the planning commission denied you, and said it'll be 60-plus.
True, and we accepted that decision.
That's a good thing. We do have increased parking, 106 to 121.
Yes.
A good thing. Laundry rooms now are added to each apartment?
This is per the request of the planning commission, and we did.
That's huge, because they weren't, they didn't have laundry facilities inside their unit before?
No. Now, we have laundry hookup in each, in each unit.
Okay. There's no longer, in the new design, there's no longer a common interior hallway, but individual exterior access to each unit.
True.
See, I like that. I like that way more than a motel feel.
There is one more thing, if I can, if I may add, too. In the old design, there was no turnaround area if in case you, you enter the project by mistake and you want to exit the, the project before, before. You had to actually pull back all the way to the street and make, make you turn on Buena Vista so you can exit. What we end up doing, and this is after a discussion with the traffic, is like, okay, what about if we create, if we eliminate this possibility by creating a turnaround area on both sides of the driveway, on, on, on the south side and the north side? And they are marked already, and you can see them in the proposal. You enter, the gate is closed, there is no way to, you cannot continue, fine. You can make your U-turn within the property and exit without backing up to Buena Vista.
Okay. So let's see. So the, the trees were increased from 24 to 36. I think that's good. More mature trees for the perimeter. The entry gate was raised for security purposes?
Yes, we, we raised it to seven feet.
Okay. And the two adjacent property owners, I'm told by my, my planning commissioner who knocked on their doors, that they are not fighting this project. So with these, all these changes that were made at the last planning commission meeting, it seems like this, to me, this is a lot nicer project, and if we deny it, it's just going to go back to the original project, which I think is inferior. Now, say that the developer, the property owner says, "You know what? I'm tired of dealing with Corona. It's a nightmare, whatever," and you just decide to leave. That property is zoned for R3, which means hypothetically, somebody could come in and build 75 senior units per acre, which would be 160 dwelling units compared to 62 that we have now, and with the way it's going with the state, as we're all aware, with losing our local control, that's a possibility, a real possibility. So I don't, I don't have a big problem with this project with the, with the improvements made.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one additional question, and just, just really quick. If, if we were to, or if I was to, to ask, would it be possible to put some screening between the parking and the amenities? Is that something that you could, you could agree to tonight?
Oh, that's easy.
Okay.
That's easy. There is, there is 100 ways of putting those screens in between. And to tell you the truth, we're talking about like just almost one, a couple, one area. The second building, which is the one, the L-shaped building, it's already screened by, by nature, because it houses the outdoor exercise areas, the jacuzzis and the gym, which per code, we are required to provide some kind of like fencing and screening. So what you're proposing is actually goes on one, on one building, which is, it's totally acceptable by us. It's not a really big deal.
Thank you.
Sylvia, is there another speaker card?
Mayor, yes, we received an additional speaker card.
Okay. Tony? Can he speak? Thank you.
For listening, Tony Finaldi, Coroner resident. Wanted to put my two cents in. So I, I actually logged on to the planning commission meetings for this one, and this project essentially doesn't respect the neighbors. It's massive. It envelops and swallows those two houses. I think, Tony and Wes, you guys see this. Jim, you're right. It is a better one than, better project than the old one. I think none of them are good. They shouldn't be there at all. Yeah. However, it was approved. You're right. So if they hurry up, they might be able to get it done. We're hoping it goes away. Honestly, it's, it's wrong. There was a lot of talk in the planning commission meetings about these amenities, and even Ms. Alexander, as astute as all her comments were, she brought up the washer and dryer thing. Great. But amenities have nothing to do with the impact on the surrounding community. Amenities are just about making it sellable, rentable, whatever, so they can sell or rent units, however they're doing this thing, to the clients. Nothing to do with the people that live, you know, those two houses that are getting surrounded. Could care less if they're shuffleboard or washing dryers. It doesn't do nothing for them. They, that's what they did. They added amenities to make it more sellable, raise the rent price, make it pencil, because the old one didn't pencil, is my guess. My two cents. Anyway, I don't think the project should be. If you approve it now with the new amenities, et cetera. If you approve it now with the new amenities, et cetera, probably does pencil. They probably will build it. My guess is they won't if you don't approve this. Anyway, my two cents. Thanks.
All right. Come on up. Yep, come on up.
Excuse me. Is it possible to share this on the screen? Just this one?
Actually, what I would like to say is completely the opposite of the claim that we don't really care for the neighbor.
Okay. This one is better.
One of the things that we also changed is knowing that this is a nuisance to the neighbor. No one asked us to do it. Mr. Sald, the owner of the project, being a good neighbor, he's the one who asked us, go ahead, please, make sure to move this. In the previous, in the approved project, you can see on the far left the location of the trash enclosure. The trash enclosure, in the previous, in the approved project, they concentrated all the trash in one location right behind the neighbor property with an open roof. Can you imagine what kind of a smell? Now, remember, we want to go with the old projects? Fine, we can go with the old project. That's what the old project is. But what we did, we said, no, 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 no. And we want to be a good neighbor, so let's relocate those trash. And now, if you follow on the other screen, you will see where we moved the trash enclosure to inside the project, within confined spaces within the building, under where we can better control the smell. This is one. Second, we're talking about the amenities. Yes, we really care for the neighbor. Can you imagine like pushing all the amenities next, right behind those two properties in the middle, two homes in the middle, where you might have like a 15 person at night like getting together? What kind of a noise they might generate? And who is going to control? Also, the owner requests, he said, no, 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 no. I want to be a good neighbor. Move everything away from the neighbor. I want to have a project where everybody enjoy it. They have a four-feet landscape. Give them the maximum allowed, which we gave them 10 feet instead. And it's not only four feet. So talking about being friendly to the neighbor, I think we went way beyond by even, okay, you know what? I have 106 cars versus 121 cars. In reality, if we go back also to the old design and you compare the location, out of the 166 cars, 10 of those cars is outside the gate limit. What means is you have only 96 cars available to be used by the residents inside. In our proposed new project, we only allowed three cars to be outside the gate, and those cars are only for the visitors of the management. And this will leave at least 100, I think 100, will leave at least 116 or 21, 118 cars versus 96. This is an extra 22 cars to be used by the residents. So to compare like two projects is like, okay, yeah, I have 106 cars, 96 cars they can use where? Oh, or they can use, I don't know, if there is even a comparison in between the two designs or the two projects. We have one project, two design. One approved, one improved. One of them for sure is going to be built. So the question is, which one? And that's why we are here. We are here asking for your help. Help us improve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody want to re-comment, or you're good? I do have comments for myself. I did watch this go through the planning commission on TV. And if you don't know, currently, the Corona Planning Commission is the best it's ever been, by far and away. All the planning commissioners just excel. I watched Karen and Craig and team grab a hold of this project. And as they worked their magic, they said, you could do this better, you could do this better. And they do this with every project, by the way, not just this one. It's anything that gets set before them. These guys look at every angle, and they just, they rock. That's just the best way to say it. I agree with Jim that it is a better project, in some sense of the words, that they've improved some things. In other ways, I think it's a much more horrible project. I think they've taken one big central building, and they've broken it up into smaller buildings, and they've pushed them off to the side. And then when you go online and look at the map, the side that they've pushed them to, they're basically pushing all these units up to existing units on the other side. And that's just going to be a source of contention. So I don't believe it's a better project at all. As one who thoroughly opposed this project back in 2018, I'm hoping it goes away. I'm still hoping it goes away. I don't think the old project, as it is now, is feasible or economic from an owner's standpoint. I think the only way that they'll be able to make it economical to build will be to, in the future, buy those two properties and design right. Right now, you're not designed right. You have no function. I'm thoroughly against this, but that's my opinion. And with that, Sylvia, do we vote on this?
Yes, Mayor, we do need a motion and a vote.
Okay. Jackie?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the item as recommended by the planning commission.
Second?
Can I have a substitute motion? Also to approve, however, adding the screening that we talked about. I think that will make some changes. And those were my primary concerns. I agree with Jim. I think there is some, the possibility of something worse coming is, it is slightly better than the last one. I did not catch the trash enclosure, the very first one, and I could see that being a major, major issue. And so just in case they do. And frankly, from an economical standpoint, buying someone's property that either doesn't want to sell, which we found out when we talked to those folks, I think the very first time. I went and knocked on their doors the very first time. And they weren't interested in selling. So I think something worse is going to come, and it's going to be in that same footprint. And I think with those, I'd like to make the motion to approve with those caveats.
Jackie, are you cool with Wes's alternate?
I am.
Okay. Jim, you want to second Wes's?
Yep.
Sylvia, can we do that?
Yes, so we're going to be voting on the motion that Councilmember Speak made.
Correct. Okay. All right, there you have it. It was a barn burner. Up next, regional meetings. Sit back, listen to the calm, soothing words of Wes Speak as he updates us on the San Ana watershed project.
Thank you. Actually, something interesting. And I'm not saying that that's not interesting usually, but I am thrilled to announce that on November 15th, the San Ana River Weather Modification Pilot Program was officially live and operational. That means that we are officially doing cloud seeding to make it rain when it's appropriate to rain. So pretty exciting thing. This is the very first time that we've done it in the county. Sopaw is the one heading that. If you have any questions or any concerns, they have a website at sopaw.org, and we'll tell you all about it. In fact, if you have specific questions, they have a link that will take you to. It'll tell you exactly when and where they are doing this, usually after the fact, but sometimes before. But they do make sure they monitor so they're not making it rain over places that are burn scars. The weather modification program aims to explore innovative methods to enhance precipitation in the San Ana River watershed. The modification program is a proactive approach to address water scarcity in a region so we can make sure it rains over places where we can collect it. The program's operation, monitoring, and evaluation process ensures that all weather-related modification activities are safe, environmentally responsible, and comply with regulatory standards. And they are committed to transparency, scientific rigor, and environmental stewardship throughout the weather modification program. So I did go on, I did ask some questions randomly, and they were really quick on answering stuff back, and they're pretty excited about seeing how this program rolls out. But this is a pilot program that's funded entirely by the state, and they're pretty excited about it. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Wes. It's good to have some rain. Up next, riveting report on the RCTC by Maestro Speak.
Let's see, just a couple of things we voted on. I won't bore you with the easy ones. However, we did give an amendment to cover some last-minute items for the I-15 91 Express Lanes Connector Project and a contract for Michael Baker and Associates to continue with Phase 6 of on the SART, San Ana River Trail Project. And that's by the Green River Golf Course, and they are proceeding. The 91-15 Express Lanes Connector opened to the public just the day before, I'm sorry, a couple days before Thanksgiving, after crews kind of sped it up to ensure that it was open for Thanksgiving. And that's full, I think, three weeks early. Express Lane customers can now take the southbound 15 Express Lanes directly from the westbound 91 Express Lanes and vice versa in the eastbound and northbound directions. I think officially, what that'll do is that will stop folks from having to get out of the toll lanes and actually, you know, be driving the general-purpose lanes and then cut across the freeway. The most important area is, I call it the spaghetti bowl. The folks that are coming from the north part and from Norco and Eastville and Hoopa Valley, when they want to get to the toll lanes, they have to stay in the general-purpose lanes, transition through this four lanes that they have to cross three to four lanes of traffic actually to get in the general-purpose lanes. There's been a lot of accidents there, as predicted, when they first did it. This will actually pull out a few thousand cars. In fact, they had over 3,000 cars use it the first day it was open. So it was pretty successful. And then last thing was, officially, with the opening of the connector, officially switched to dynamic pricing for both toll systems in Riverside County. And what that means is that the pricing is adjusted every 10 minutes based on actual use of the toll lanes. And I'll remind everybody again that it is not how busy the general-purpose lanes are. If you see the general-purpose lanes busy, has nothing to do with the price. The price has to do with how busy the toll lanes are. So if you see a really high price, that means the toll lanes are packed, which is the opposite of what most people think. They see, you know, you got to pay a high price. You see some value, and that is absolutely not true. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, you heard it here first, spaghetti bowl update. Wesley, you want to wrap it up?
I'm going to round it out here. I'm going to come in fast. The 91 Advisory Committee, which expected record-high toll revenue, $67 million, up 7% year-over-year. That was on the Orange County side. RCTC was 62 million. I'm sorry, that was for RCTC, 62 million for OCTA. So we actually officially passed them up. In 2024, they're estimated to increase another 8%. When I asked questions about, you know, why they thought there'd be an extra 8%, and they actually said that the actual toll dollars per trip will go down based on dynamic pricing. However, they're anticipating that, based on construction and everything else, there's going to be more folks that are actually getting back to work. So they're anticipating an 8% increase. Let's see. We had a lot of talks about Coal Center. I know that Mr. Moody likes this. There's 30,000 calls per month. 94% of the calls were answered within 60 seconds, and only 0.3% abandoned rate, which I thought was pretty interesting. And then their rating was 4.88 out of 5 with folks who stuck around to answer. We also heard a report that there's going to be some work on the 91, believe it or not, in Orange County. The Lakeview On-ramp and separate ramps for the 91 and 55, there'll be some major construction that will start in 2024 at a eastbound lane between the 55 and the 57. And that will be a replacement of the La Palma Bridge. They're actually going to take it down and leave it down for, I think, two years. And this lovely construction will start in 2024. And it's three separate projects, and they will end in 2030. So six years of construction in lovely Orange County and more reasons to live and work in the city of Corona. And OCTA was very excited to announce that they had their second set of toll lanes open on the 405. And it's already done record numbers in its first week. And that's it.
Thank you, Wesley. On over to Steiner.
All right, my RTA meeting. Let's see. Okay, after several months of construction, the Vine Street Mobility Hub will officially open for business on January 14th. The five-acre hub across the street from Riverside Downtown MetroLink Station will offer seamless connections between buses and trains. The location is ideal for trips to downtown employment centers, urban businesses, housing complexes, the Riverside Convention Center, schools like UC Riverside and Riverside City College. This Friday, December 8th, there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and you are all invited. Doesn't that sound fun? Continuing a tradition of stellar audits, an independent accounting firm that reviewed RTA's financial activities for fiscal year 2023 concluded that RTA is making efficient use of its funds and following proper accounting procedures. The audit gave RTA an unmodified or clean opinion, which essentially is the highest level of assurance an audit can give. RTA wishes everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. On Christmas Day, Monday, December 25th, and New Year's Day, Monday, January 1st, RTA buses will not operate, and the customer information center and administrative offices will be closed. And then finally, on New Year's Eve, Sunday, December 31st, RTA will offer free rides to customers after 2:30 PM on all fixed route buses. It's our way of providing a safe transportation alternative during the holiday and saying thank you to our customers for their year-round patronage. Completes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Did they pick their new president, the RTA?
Yes. Yes, it's Jeremy Smith.
I was voting for you.
I'm a vice chairman.
All right, well, there you go. City attorneys' reports. We'll wake up Dean and... And you can go back to sleep. Jacob, do you want to say anything?
No, Mayor, thank you so much.
All right. Justin, Brett, you guys want to say anything? No, you're good? There we go. Look at that. City council member reports. Tony, you want to wax eloquent?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't get my report in from RCA in time, but I do want to make mention of two pretty cool things. One, the RCA, in a joint project with the San Gorgonio Girl Scouts, has launched Project 146, which is a project where you will be able to earn, kind of like Girl Scout patches, but patches that are really cool for doing, for going on different nature hikes and visiting some... for going on different nature hikes and visiting some of the conserved lands that we have in the county of Riverside. The website is not active just yet, but it should be very soon, and I hope to give a full updated report on that next month. We also selected a new chair for RCA. It's going to be Kevin Bash from the city of Norco. And the vice chair will be Supervisor Spiegel, because apparently we have to have a supervisor as one of the chairs. I'm not exactly sure how that happened, but so that's going to be a lot of fun. Great tree lighting events this past weekend. The city, again, knocked it out of the park and did a great job here at the Historic Civic Center. That was a lot of fun. Also went to the tree lighting at Dos Lagos, where they did announce some new tenants. I don't want to take Councilmember Speak's thunder, I'm sure he's going to say it, but I'm really excited about some of the new tenants that they have coming in. This past Saturday, both Corona PD and Corona Fire are doing their annual toy drives. They collected a bunch of toys on Saturday, and I know the fire department is doing as well. I'm sure there's boxes still up everywhere. So if you have donations that you would like to give, please reach out to any one of the fire stations and/or the police department. And lastly, on Saturday, Councilmember Speak and I both attended the Celebration of Life for Shailene Cortez. It was at the Elks Lodge, and it was a packed house. People were having to park across the street at the park. We lost, you know, we lost a great resident of the city of Corona, and she was celebrated. Lots of great speaking. Both Councilmember Speak and I got to speak as well, and just a great person that I'm sorry to, I'm sad to miss. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Wesley?
Mayor, sorry. We did skip agenda item number 37, the 2024 meeting calendar.
Hang on a second. Oh, we did. All right. Wes, you're going to have to hang out for a second.
All good.
Sylvia?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we are preparing the 2024 meeting agenda schedule, and we're seeking your direction for meeting dates that land near holidays and on holidays. So we are seeking direction for the first meeting in January, January 3rd, the second meeting in June, which lands on Juneteenth, so City Hall will be closed. We're also seeking direction for the first and second meeting in July, as well as the second meeting in December. For July and December, usually we go dark during the second meetings, but because of the holidays, we wanted to take direction from the council.
So did you guys get all that?
Well, how do you want to address it?
Let's just knock it out one date at a time. So can you go first?
Okay, so the first meeting is January 3rd, 2024.
So if we don't have a second December meeting, we would miss another meeting, so that'd be two in a row. So do you want to move it to Thursday or do it on Wednesday or?
Why not have this? Does anybody have any objections to that date?
To the 3rd? Tony? Tony's looking. Jackie?
No objection. It's just it's close, but it's a large gap, yeah.
The hangover can wear off.
I'm likely going to be out of town on the 3rd.
Okay, so Steiner's gone.
I currently don't have something on my calendar, but I would, I got to check with the boss at home. But, yeah, I mean, I don't think that that, I think that that's a pretty big gap to come back on the 17th with an 87-page agenda.
I feel like tonight was an 87-page agenda. So I think we're yes on 3, January 3rd. What's the next one, Sylvia?
Okay, the next one is June 19th. City Hall will be closed in observance of Juneteenth.
Tony?
I agree with that.
Yeah.
So no meeting?
No meeting.
So Wes is no meeting, I'm no meeting, Steiner's no meeting, Jackie's all for it. Okay, no meeting on the 10th.
Okay, and then the next is the first and second meeting, July 3rd and July 17th.
So do you guys just want to move it to July 17th instead of the 3rd?
So I don't think we should meet on the 3rd.
So then you'd have a meeting on the 17th.
Are we being asked?
That means we're going to...
What's going on on the July 17th?
We usually go dark for the second meeting in July.
Oh. Well, let's just do the 3rd then.
You want the meeting on July 3rd?
Better not skip 2.
And then we'll skip the one we normally go dark in.
That makes more sense to me. I'm fine on the 3rd, but not skipping 2.
If you can't make it, you can't make it.
So remember, we went dark also as a way to allow for, like, summer recess, for folks to take their holidays, and we had, did we originally have, like, the break in August and then we moved it to July?
That's correct. So the ideal is the last meeting in July is the one that we typically cancel to give everybody a break before school starts. The only reason why we brought this up is because with July 3rd, you'd be up late at night before the parade the next morning. If you guys are okay with that, it works for everybody else.
No, that'd be really difficult for staff on July 3rd, but what I'm talking about is, are we still proposing that break on July 17th?
Well, I think if we canceled July 3rd, then we would have the meeting on July 17th.
Correct. We're just suggesting that one of the two meetings. It doesn't matter which one.
Make your choice.
My only hesitation with canceling July 3rd is that you're going to miss two meetings.
No, 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 they're saying not to miss two meetings.
Yeah, so if you have, if you don't take July 3rd, well, we can do whatever we want.
Here's my point, is that we're not having a meeting on June 19th. So then that would mean if you skip to July 17th, you're skipping two meetings.
Okay, then I'm all for July 3rd. How about you guys?
I'm fine with it.
Wait, you're all for what on July 3rd?
Having, okay, let me explain.
Canceling July, or I'm sorry.
Oh, having a council meeting, so we'll take June 19th, have a meeting on July 3rd, and then skip the 2nd July meeting.
Understood.
Is that cool with everyone?
All right, I hope we...
What do you think? What's your concern?
I'm concerned about the 4th of July, the very next day, and having all staff. I mean, we just, it's a very, it's our biggest event. It requires a lot of staff. I mean, we have to get together for, the parade starts at 9, right? Is it 9?
Something like that. I don't remember the exact time, but I believe so.
9:00 AM folks sign up. It just, I mean, hopefully it's not heavy.
We excuse Ms. Finch, and she doesn't have to be here, because she's going to be...
She does not have to be here on July 3rd.
Yeah, she will not be here on July 3rd.
Jacob, what would the staff prefer?
The, most of the staff aren't here in the council meetings at night, so the large bulk of people that would be coming in, it's not a problem. So I think having council meetings, not having two off at a time is desirable. It just, it prevents us from having too long of a break. We can live with either, but probably what makes sense would be to hold the meeting on the 3rd and cancel the 17th.
And Donna is excused.
And Donna doesn't have to come.
I'll be here.
No, no, you're not allowed.
You don't have to take direction from Donna. Just ignore that.
There's a whole lecture on policy and operations and...
That's my future agenda, is Ms. Finch not having to be here on July 3rd.
I'm comfortable with canceling July 17th and meeting July 3rd.
All right, Cassius has spoken.
I'm also canceling, I'm also comfortable canceling all three. But that would be awful coming back.
It's your choice, I guess. You can just not show up to any of them if you want.
Sylvia, what's the next one?
The next one is the second meeting in December, December 18th. We usually go dark for the second meeting in December. However, the first meeting in January is January 1st, and we're, City Hall will be closed.
Who do you guys want to meet?
So in '24.
Here's my other question. So, as the three of us experienced, the votes came in late and... And if we're having a meeting on the 4th and not a meeting until January, then the new or existing council members wouldn't get sworn in until January.
That won't affect me at all. I'm fine with it.
No, but then we have to scramble.
It's not about you, though, by the way.
We have to scramble for it. If we cancel the 18th of December and the results aren't certified, we'd have to scramble to make a last-minute meeting.
During, Council, during the previous election, we held a special meeting because of that certifying the election, and we had a special meeting the second Wednesday of December to certify the election.
Rather than the third Wednesday.
That's correct.
We could do that again.
Yeah, I'm cool with that.
Okay.
And Jackie has spoken. So...
And the Lord is happy.
And the Lord is happy. Sylvia, does that wrap it up, or do you want to go over 2025?
No, we're good. We will update the schedule and post it on the city's website, as well as add to your calendars.
Okay. Not bad for a first meeting. Wes, do you want to give your comments?
Yes. One thing I did forget to ask, because it was on a separate set of notes. The Route 91 Committee, we actually wanted to report back that 670 acres of land will be added to the MS HCP Reserve. And that area is just, it's called Bee Canyon, so it's just to the west of, it's actually in the city's sphere of influence, but more undeveloped open space. We, let's see, Councilmember Richards and I attended the 9115 Connector ribbon-cutting today. It was really interesting to watch the folks that were involved in the project. And I think the best speaker of the night, and probably the best speaker I've heard in a long time, was the construction manager for the project. So he, I think he let the F-word go pretty early in the speech. He cried during the National Anthem. He hit all the big things. He really did speak from the heart, and it was good to hear him. And strangely enough, he's actually in District 2 and was very happy to be working from home. And I did tell him that I didn't hear one complaint about how dirty the project was or that there was trash anywhere. And he said, "Thank you for noticing." It was something that was number one on his list to make sure that it maintained a very clean place, because it was his city, and he was very, very proud of that. It was also fascinating to watch Senator Roth and Assemblymember Cervantes get up and acknowledge their part in this, which was the funding for this project, or most of the funding for this project, came from SB 132. And Assemblymember Cervantes was in her first year. And as an assembly member, and she got significant pressure to go along, and she was counseled wisely by Senator Roth, and frankly, got over $400 million worth of money for Inland Empire Projects, and this being one of them. So you could see, you know, even though it had been five years before, you could see the emotion in her eyes when she talked. So it was, I wanted to thank her afterward, because you could tell there were some flashbacks of pain there. So I can only imagine. As, it was the week or weekend of ribbon-cutting between the crossings the week before, Dos Lagos, and then on Saturday, and then the tree lighting. My favorite was the tree lighting, you know, here. I love both those places, but the tree lighting here in front of the Historic Civic Center is always a special spot, and staff did a fantastic job. I think it was even bigger than it was last year, and were very well-attended. Seeing kids playing and having a great time was really awesome to see. But I, and thank you for, I want to say Mr. Mayor, not Mr. Ex-Mayor. Was very happy to, when I was at the Dos Lagos tree lighting, they did have some really cool announcements for new projects. They added 810 bowling, which is a kind of a punchbowl, social, exciting kind of bowling facility that they're going to be bringing in. Checked them out, looked pretty fun. K1 Speed will be bringing a facility to that location, and then, not to bury the lead, but the improv, the actual improv, will be at Dos Lagos. That was a big coup for them. I met with the current owner of the improv, and it was pretty exciting. They were pretty excited about coming as well. And they have a lot of stuff going on there, between the new restaurant openings. They, Dada Sushi opened up, and that's been great. They have, they finally got possession of the old Taps Building, so they have seven different restaurants that are bidding on trying to get into that building. They've sunk over $2 million into their amphitheater. They're bringing in named acts, big-name acts, not just folks that are doing the, you know, tribute bands. Nothing wrong with the tribute bands, but they're bringing in comedians and all kinds of other folks, so that you should see some really outstanding programming at that location. That's it. Thank you, sir.
All right, no rules, Cassius.
I didn't get my report in on time, so I too want to share out that we met with WR COG. And I had WR COG meeting, I had IRN meeting, and at both, we had a presentation about a grant fund opportunity, and it's still a little fuzzy. I don't understand all of the mechanics behind it, but the bottom line is this, that the federal government, through the 2022 Inflation Reduction Act, created a climate pollution reduction grants. And this is, these are monies that are already allocated by the federal government. And we have an opportunity in the state of California, and specifically in our region, to apply and receive these federal grants. And this is money that's already spent, and it needs to be allocated before the presidential election. I mean, it's a coincidence. And so the conversation now is, who will be the managing entity to apply for these funds? And WR COG is a regional entity. Through WR COG, the IRN is an entity that works with, you know, Coachella Valley COG, Western Riverside COG, and San Bernardino COG. So the structure's already there with IRN to take on this role, and so exploration is continuing. But we're talking about, you know, double-digit millions of dollars of grants. And the reality is that, like, we just need someone to apply. And if it's not WR COG and IRN, which seems like we're probably the best suited to do so, then it has to be someone in the region, because it would be a real shame. Tom will do it. It would be a real shame if we don't go for these monies. Again, other people's monies. It's really our money, but you know what I'm saying? It's money that's out there, and it would all go to, you know, proposed projects, like actual projects, and that can help reduce greenhouse gases. So, anyway, that's exciting, and I appreciate having the time to report it. Thank you.
All right, Dario would have never put up with late reports, by the way. It's all out of control, Ellis. Salt Lake, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Corona Library Trustee Connie Newhan. She was first appointed in 2017, and I reappointed her in 2020. And she has decided not to run for reappointment. Her term is up, so we now have a vacancy, and I'm searching for a replacement. So thank you, Connie.
Yeah, Connie, if you're watching, you're very beloved. I can dedicate a meeting, right? All right. Oh, I would... He's got the ropes. And it feeds into my dedication, coincidentally. I don't have any comments, because I'm just overwhelmed today. But I would like to dedicate this meeting to, my first meeting as mayor, to my mother, who, Councilmember Steiner is her favorite still. And with that, oh, I will close the meeting. The next meeting, oh crap, when is the next meeting?
January 3rd.
The next meeting of the council is January 3rd. And we adjourn this in my mother's name, and there you go.